Okay, it's six oh one PM. I will call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustees, don't forget to put your mics on when you need to speak. Tia, could you roll call, please?
Yes. President Pecor.
Here.
Trustee Barhite.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Polley.
Here.
Trustee Faber.
Here.
Trustee Hopkins.
Here.
And Trustee Gant.
Yeah.
Right. Did we meet open meeting compliance?
Yes, we did. We posted the agenda at the Village Hall here and on the website on Thursday, August fourteenth.
Great. Trustees, are there any changes to the agenda sequence?
No.
Okay. We will move into public comments. Please address the board. There will be no back and forth discussions and it is a three-minute limit. Uh, first, I have one to be read into the record. My name is Samantha Hopkins and my husband and I are residents of seven zero zero three two hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue, Salem Lakes. I am writing to formally express my concerns regarding the proposed Salem Hills addition by Bear. These concerns are presented from a personal perspective on behalf of my neighbor, our neighborhood, and in consideration of local wildlife conservation. Personal impact. The most significant concern is the proposed construction of a road adjacent to my property and that of my neighbors, the Buchanan family. This road, along with a planned home in our backyard, would eliminate the privacy that was a primary factor in our decision to purchase this home. The road is intended intended to serve as the sole access point for both construction and future residents. With construction expected to last multiple years and permanent residential traffic thereafter, the resulting increase in noise and traffic would severely disrupt our daily lives. Our master bedroom, dining room, living room, and secondary bedroom windows would be directly exposed to headlights and activity. I have attached an image highlighting the affected windows, both in my home and my neighbors. Furthermore, this disruption would extend to my professional life as I work from home and would be directly impacted by the noise and disturbances associated with road construction. Additionally, mature trees along our property line are at risk of removal. My spouse and I purchased this home for its privacy and safety with the prospect of losing these qualities is and the prospect of losing these qualities is deeply distressing. Neighbor impact. My neighbor's home would be only seventeen point five feet from the proposed road with their well just seventeen feet away. According to section four ninety dash thirty-one point three, average street yards and shore yards, R two zoning requires a thirty-foot setback from the right-of-way for residential roads. The current proposal does not allow for this setback negatively affecting property value, appeal, and quality of life. Previous construction in two thousand eight and two thousand nine led to flooding on neighborhood neighboring properties. Risking damage and similar issues may recur with new development. Neighborhood impact. The increased traffic and noise would fundamentally alter the character of our neighborhood, which is valued for its small size, tranquility, and safety. Many children play in the streets and residents frequently walk throughout the area. The proposed changes threaten these qualities. Wildlife conservation. The surrounding tree lines, forests, and wetlands are habitats for turkey, deer, coyotes, skunks, possums, bats, and raccoons. Notably, the tree line in my backyard supports a significant population of Wisconsin special concern species, martens. Disrupt disruption of these habitats would have a detrimental effect on local wildlife. Recommendations to the board. Based on these concerns, I respectfully urge the board to reject the Salem Hills addition proposal. If rejection is not feasible, I request that the following conditions be met before proceeding. Number one, access route, the entry and exit for the addition should be via Highway fifty, not the proposed road. Although WISDOT previously raised concerns about proximity to the Highway fifty median, similar entries have since been approved for the Reserve, Bristol Veterinary Service, and Kenosha County Storage. We recommend revisiting this issue with WISDOT. Number two, tree line preservation. The existing tree line separating neighborhoods must be maintained to ensure privacy. Serve as a noise barrier, protect wildlife habitats, and preserve century-old trees that help mitigate flooding risks. Number three, flooding precautions. Bear must implement measures to prevent flooding for current residents. If flooding occurs, construction should be halted until a resolution is achieved. Number four, construction hours. Construction should not occur on weekends. On weekdays, work should be limited to seven AM to five PM to minimize disruption to the Salem Hills neighborhood. Attached is a map indicating the tree line to be preserved, the proposed new entry-exit road, removal of property lines, and updated locations for property lines and houses. Thank you for your attention to these concerns and for considering the well-being of current residents and local environment. Now, I'll just wait. Okay, Paula. Thank you. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for having this meeting so that we can air our deep concerns about the proposed subdivisions. Um, I've been a resident in my same house for fifty-four years, going on fifty-five years. So I have seen this county grow from nineteen seventy-one until today. And it is not the same place that we moved into. When we moved to our house, there was gravel roads, no sidewalks. The road is two-car garage-wide. You have to be careful going on either side because there's children with bicycles that are learning to ride bicycles and they're not in control of the bikes. We have now no paved streets. We had no curb and gutter. The subdivisions that are being proposed are going to impact the traffic that we have seen increase dramatically over the last twenty years or so. I understand these subdivisions. Um, there's a lot of people moving into the into the county, um, from northern Illinois. We don't have the room. We don't have the tax money. We're a bedroom community. Our taxes are going to go up dramatically the more subdivisions that we have, that we cannot afford to support. It's going to impact our schools. We've already had problems funding Central High School, Salem Grade School, the other schools. Now we're gonna add three more subdivisions full of children. Where where's that money coming from? My tax dollars on my house are over six thousand five hundred dollars, and that's a fifteen hundred dollar increase from last year. This is not sustainable. We cannot keep providing money for the developers so that they can get rich when it's on our backs. The volume that we of traffic that we have coming in has got to be dealt with before we plan any more subdivisions. Highway fifty is a fiasco. Highway eighty-three is just as bad. There's no stoplights at Seabird's. You can't get in and out. The road going from Highway eighty-three on eighty-fourth Street.
That's a three-minute limit.
And eighty-fifth Street is on is not passable practically, and we have no money for it. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Keith Hopkins, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Keith Hopkins, seven zero zero three two hundred and eighty-fourth Ave, Salem, Wisconsin. Thank you for, um, speaking on behalf of my wife for her proposal. She cannot be here tonight. Um, except my name is Keith Hopkins. I'm a current resident of the Salem Hills subdivision. I'd like to speak today and express my concerns about the proposed Salem Hills addition. Our main concern is the projected access road that would be between Lot seventeen and Lot eighteen, located on the parcel owned by Burwick Properties. According to the section of the village code, it appears that this access point would conflict with existing zoning and setback requirements. I did read and review the conceptual review presented by Bear. Bear stated, "The road, um, has been aligned to minimize site disturbance." It was also stated, "This project meets the goals of the Village of Salem Lakes, comprehensive plan, and is compliant with the existing zoning and compatible with surrounding land uses." We ask if the village conducted a formal review to confirm whether this access road can be permitted under code. If any variance or special exception is being pursued, we respectfully request to be notified of the application and any, uh, associated hearings. Reviewing previous proposals from the early two thousand seven to two thousand nine, there was a proposed access road from Highway fifty to the subdivision. We understand that the Wisconsin DOT deemed this to be a hazardous entry, but since then, there has been approvals for businesses and subdivisions. We ask for this to be reassessed to be the access road for the addition. From a personal and neighborhood perspective, this access point would be considered the main route for construction lasting a few years with increased residential traffic uh thereafter. The current Salem Hills neighborhood lots were appealing for their peacefulness, wildlife, and privacy. I'm certain that most residents do not purchase these types of homes with roughly one-acre lots of land to have increased traffic. And for those that are on the proposed access road to become corner lots with new homes directly in their backyards that will impact wildlife habitat, privacy, and natural resources. The potential of losing these qualities is very discouraging and would diminish the characteristics that attracted us here. We encourage the planning commission and board to review past concerns from the original development plan from the early two thousands to present related to flooding, wetlands, setbacks, and zone.
That's a three minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, maybe Redlin? Please come forward and is it was that right? Okay, state your name and address for the record.
Mike Redlin. I live at nine oh five Lakeview Drive. And my concern basically is every time we get bad rains, we flood. So we have a very bad problem with all the flooding that's gonna come down. So once you're gonna add more homes to that, we may have still a problem with flooding. And also, you're gonna add, each individual house will have its own well. So like us, I share a well with one of my neighbors, so that in turn helps. I don't know how Bear tends to do the wells as well. So I just really have a concern with the sewer, with the, uh, with the flooding and everything that's gonna affect my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Rodifer. Rodifer, please come forward. Sure. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Melissa, and I live at six oh seven East Dells Road. Good evening. My name is Melissa, and I've been a resident of Silver Lake since nineteen ninety-six, when my father retired from the military after serving twenty years active duty. We moved around a lot and lived in a very populated areas. My family learned that we do not care for that urban lifestyle. There are many reasons for that, and a lot of those are now coming to Silver Lake. For now, excuse me, for us, moving to Silver Lake was exactly what we wanted, that rural lifestyle. Now, because one person who owns the land and has money, wants to make more money, the whole community must suffer. How is that fair? It is often said, it's his land, and he should be able to build whatever he wants on it, but that's not enough. If we were to use that logic, would it be fair to say that if your neighbor wanted to build a bar or possibly a landfill next to your house, you would just have to conform or move? You see, it's not only our community who suffers, but our surrounding lake, land, and wildlife as well. With all this going up, it will increase the negative impacts on them, which I will get into now. Due to time constraints, I will leave my personal feelings on this aside and provide you with the factual concerns I have about all this recent development and discussion. I personally have seen firsthand just how much water runs off this land as it floods my backyard around Dell's Road and Lakeview, mine included. Since the last thinning of that property years ago, our yard has flooded way worse. And since it has been left alone, it has been getting progressively better. It has only been getting better as each year passes. With new development, it will only increase. Who do we send the bill to when we get more flooding? Moreover, how many of you enjoy the lake's beauty or the path alongside of it, the wildlife that thrives from it, or enjoy spending time fishing or swimming on it with your families? How many of you have you given any thought to how these new development projects will impact all of that? When you pull up the watershed maps that I provided from Silver Lake's management site, it shows exactly where the sensitive spots are located. It also shows where most of the watershed comes from, as well as where it leaves the lake and goes into other surrounding waterway areas and communities such as Fox River. Exactly where Bear is proposing to build around Lakeview and Dell's Road. That is where the most sensitive area is, as well as where most of the watershed comes from. So all this will result in the following, leaching into our lake, disrupting our ecosystems. Litter, chemical from building materials and blacktop, gas, oil, soaps, road salt, sand will increase the sediment in our lake, destroying our aquatic ecosystems, pesticides, weed killers, fertilizers, phosphorus, and nitrogen from grass clippings and rodent poisons. We all know the lake is a huge draw to living here. However, if this development passes, it will now be filled with even more traffic, both on the lake and off of it. Limited trailer parking is ridiculous regardless of the no parking signs. People still park along manors. There's not enough police presence to ticket them all. Increased lake traffic results in more shoreline properties dealing with wakes, eroding their property lines. In addition, as a resident or in addition, as a resident who must travel down the rough road of Manor to exit the area, I for one can attest to how frustrating it is.
It's three minutes. Sorry.
Thank you. Pat Drager, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Pat Drager, and I live at nine oh four North Lakeview Drive. I've been there for over twenty years. And I've been in the Silver Lake area for about fifty years. Um, the flooding that happens on Lakeview Drive is horrendous. The kids can't play in their backyard. They can't play in the side yard. The only areas that they would have for, um, to have a street go from that back subdivision that's planned to the to Highway B. There are eight children that live right there, one directly across the street and one right next door. They have two children next door that play. They ride their bikes. My two great-grandkids ride their bikes up and down. This is gonna affect them and their safety. Right now, it's a dead-end street, and we still have people turning down, thinking that they can get into the back subdivision, so they go racing down our street and didn't know where to go, so they gotta race back to Cogswell Drive. But the flooding every year, uh, it's it's horrible, and it brings the mosquitoes. And like they like she said, the pesticides and everything that they use for their yards and everything, it's all runoff. It's all gonna go. What's gonna happen when a child gets hit? And they can't do anything, you know, they just act as if it's not their concern. It is their concern. I've got a great-grandson that's gonna be six tomorrow. How long is he gonna last if somebody comes down out of those streets and isn't paying attention? You know, the only people that go down there, and that's what I'm concerned about, is the children that live on that street and the the flooding. I can't even use the backyard, even though it technically belongs to my neighbors, which who they're here too. They can't even walk in their back in their backyard area. It's it's a pond. And the cost to put a sump pump in, to pump the water into the sewer system, the cost that we're gonna have to do flood insurance. And that's a lot, you know, I'm on social security. I can't afford this, but I have to get it if I wanna save my house. So that's all I gotta say, I hope. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Samantha Buchanan, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Samantha Buchanan, and my address is seven one zero three two hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue in Salem, Wisconsin. Hello, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Samantha Buchanan, and I am a resident of Salem Lakes and the Salem Hills neighborhood. I am here to express my concerns regarding the conceptual development plan for the Salem Hills addition and its impact on my property and my neighborhood. My first set of concerns relates to the health and safety of my family and my home. First, the proposed the proposed access roadway leading to the new conceptual development will violate a village ordinance of requiring a thirty-foot setback of from of a dwelling away from a roadway. My home currently is only seventeen feet from the proposed road, which is a significant deviation from the established regulation. This proximity is very worrisome and raises serious safety concerns and privacy concerns for my family. Second, the proposed access road is at a higher elevation than my yard. This elevation difference would cause water to drain into my yard and potentially leaching harmful substances like oil and antifreeze into my well, into the soil. This is particularly concerning as my well is located on that side of the yard where the drainage will occur. Contaminating my well water would pose a severe health risk to my family. Lastly, we have already experienced drainage issues in my backyard and one of my neighbor's backyards due to previous earth movement in the proposed development area. I am deeply worried that this new development will exacerbate these problems, leading to more water issues and the potential for water to seep into my basement. The last thing I want to deal with is water damage and the associated costs and stress. My second set of concerns relates to the well-being and privacy of my family and my neighbors. First, the heavy equipment required for construction of this new conceptual development will further damage our already deteriorating neighborhood roads. They have been, there have been no improvements or maintenance done by the village in the time that I have lived there, and it doesn't seem as if there has been any repairs done since its original construction. The additional wear and tear from construction vehicles will only worsen the condition of our road, making it unsafe for myself and my neighbors to drive and walk on. Additionally, noise and headlights from the proposed road will also be a major concern. The elevation of the road will put headlights at high level in my living room, dining room, and master bedroom. This will disrupt my family's peace and privacy, especially during the night when we are trying to rest. This is a similar concern for other homes within the proximity of the proposed roadway, as well as those in the neighborhood on the way to gain access to Highway B. In conclusion, I urge the village board to reconsider the current plans for the conceptual Salem Hills addition development. The impacts on my property and our neighborhood are significant and cannot be ignored. I hope that we can work together for the safety and well-being of the Salem Hills neighborhood residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Marshall, please come forwards, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting us be here. My name is Michelle Marshall. I live at nine oh six Lakeview Drive. And I'm most concerned about the building of the Lakeview property behind our house. It would be directly on our property line on both sides that we would be impacted. So not only would it impact the quality of our property, but then also just the concerns for the flooding. There is a large area that floods out quite commonly and just the concerns for, because they're at a higher elevation and all of the runoff that would come off there. Um, my neighbors, they they help with, you know, preventing blockage of the drainage that goes into onto the streets and just the impact that it would have on the environment that would that's there. Um, and the children that are playing in the street, access to the walking, um, part that goes over to Silver Lake and just the impact that it would have on the noise and, um, my husband and I both work from home occasionally and like the impact that would have on us and reason we brought the house was because of the privacy and and the quietness of and quaintness of the neighborhood and just the community in general. We definitely support the school systems and want to support the neighborhood. But we would definitely be impacted by this kind of property building behind our house.
Thank you. John Marshall, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, thank you again for having us and allowing us to, uh, address the board. Really appreciate your time and how, how will you serve our village? So I'm here to, my address is nine zero six Lakeview Drive. So I'm here to talk about Silver Lake parcels and concerns. So as my, my wife previously talked about, one of the biggest concerns we have is the flooding. And I know you've heard that a couple of times, but it's true. It's the flooding is definitely a big concern for us and the risk that it would run, uh, when they put that development in. Also, the impact on natural resources, uh, the deforestation that would occur and all the habitat in there. You know, I, it's, it's a very large area and there's a lot of natural habitat in there. And of course, all that would go away. Neighborhood wise, uh, as they've talked about before, is safety in the neighborhood. We have a lot of kids, uh, and putting another subdivision in there with the access road is gonna just increase a lot more traffic and make a lot, uh, increase the risk of, uh, things happening. Not good things. Also, uh, probably one of the more concerning things is just the loss of privacy, uh, for us and our neighbors with all the forest station that we have there. When my wife and I were looking for a home, uh, we looked for about two years, looked at over a hundred homes. And when we came here to, uh, the Silver Lake and found our home, without question, we bought it for everything that the neighborhood community has to offer. We wanted to get away from the subdivision, the busy developed subdivisions. Uh, cuz that's where we lived before. And now, uh, now that's gonna return. So needless to say, we'd be very disappointed if this went through. I ask that you consider not approving this. As we have a lot of families and that to just really enjoy what that neighborhood and the community is about right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Graves, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, thank you. Can I marry Anderson?
Ken Anderson, two eight four one eight seventy-second place Salem Lakes. I think this opening that road there would be very dangerous for the kids in that neighborhood. That road was not built for heavy equipment. It's cracked, it's broke. We've talked to the village, but they seem to like it the way it is. And we think it, it would be dangerous. There's kids that play on scooters. They go by on their bikes, they're walking their dogs. That road is a, there's a long stretch there where they pick up speed and I, I just don't think that would be a safe.
Also, the construction equipment, um, that would come through while they were developing, all the noise and debris and, uh, things that go on during the day takes away the reason that we purchased there for privacy, quietness. I mean, usually we can sit in the backyard and not hear much of anything, which is great for us. Also, the fact that, um, the roads are, like my husband stated, are not that well as it is. And then later, after the construction, if there's twenty homes proposed to go into the subdivision, that would be usually two car families, I'm assuming. That would be eighty more vehicles in our neighborhood daily, twice a day usually to come and go from work at the very minimum. So in our hopes, um, as you're listening and being very gracious about it, that, um, you consider turning down this proposal. We don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Kane, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Michael Kane. I live at six eleven North Lakeview Drive. I agree with everyone else that's been here from Lakeview Drive that we don't want this. And I think if you go down the block and poll everyone that lives on that block, you're not gonna find one person that approves. And I think that should be taken into, uh, a big consideration. One of the reasons I moved to Lakeview Drive, bought the house about eight years ago. I was born and raised in Chicago, lived there for more than fifty years. Served with the Chicago Police Department, retired from there. I had plenty of chaos living in the big city in the urban environment. I came to Silver Lake to get away from that. One of the things that I liked about Lakeview Drive goes for about two city blocks long and it's a dead end. So it's very quiet. Another thing with Silver Lake is there's not one single red light or stop sign in the town. That's completely different and it's not needed. I'm not saying that we need red light, but the whole point is that because we don't have a red light there and it's not needed, that's where I wanted to be. If I wanted chaos, I would have stayed in Chicago. I have a ten-year-old son that comes up every weekend. I'm divorced now. And he comes and visits with me. There's several kids on the block that he plays with. Right now, I don't have to worry about him. You know, there's no fast traffic moving through the streets. And he can go out there, hang out with the other kids and really enjoy it. And that's what I want for him. I want that kind of environment. You know, and I'm not ready for all the construction that's gonna come along with this project. There's, it's not gonna be a one week or two week construction project. It's gonna be going on for years. And it's gonna cause complete chaos of what's going on on that block. I mean, that's pretty much all I gotta say. I agree with everything that's been set up until this point. And I just glad you took an opportunity to listen to what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Gerlach, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Gerlach, uh, seven, two nineteen, two hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue. I'm in Salem Hill subdivision, so I'll be talking on the, uh, addition there. I'm in lot twenty-one, which is the far southeast corner of that subdivision. I, there, I've always had some drainage problems at the back of that lot. And, uh, in the original plot, the original subdivision that was approved or proposed back in like two thousand and eight, there was a, uh, there was actually supposed to be a park. That, that's something that I, I don't know what changed. Back then, all subdivisions in Salem were supposed to come with a park. I, I don't know, I don't know what's different. If that got taken away. And the park was actually gonna be right behind my house, but the other piece of that was it was a, a detention pond to handle the rainwater, to handle the runoff. Um, in the new, in this current, uh, proposal, it's just lots. Lot eleven runs all along the backside of our subdivision there on the south, uh, the south side of that subdivision. And there is, I don't see anything in there, uh, that accounts for, uh, you know, handling the, the drainage of the water. There's no, I don't see any detention pond or anything like that that's approved. So one, I'm interested, you know, where, where'd the park, uh, thing go? And, uh, and two, I wanna make sure that in the original plans, they accounted for that, that runoff. And I don't see that accounted for in this, in this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Stevens, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Jennifer Stevens. It's S T E P H E N S. Um, I live at eight oh one Lakeview Drive and my niece owns the home at eight thirty-five, uh, Lakeview Drive, which will be directly across where the, um, new street is plotted for. I've lived here, uh, for twenty-six years in Silver Lake, moved from Chicago, like others, when my daughter was here. Thirty-one years ago was starting kindergarten, was looking for the, you know, Silver Lake small town. My main concern is traffic. Lakeview Drive is a cul-de-sac. Whereas others have said, children, families currently ride bikes, play with other neighbors, neighbors walk, bless you. There's definite safety concern of adding, you know, um, these number of houses. You know, back in twenty nineteen, it was twenty-seven houses. I have a note here, um, that was actually posted from, uh, on West of the Eye that John Hatlin of Bear Development said his company originally approached the village, this time with a plan for five large lots with single home on each parcel. But was encouraged by village staff to return with more homes. That's, that's really disappointing to me. I mean, I think if you were, you know, if you lived on Lakeview Drive, you, you would know, um, and you would not want that for yourself. You know, the part that we moved up here was it is a cul-de-sac. You know, there's heavy times when even now I try to make a left, um, work from home majority of the time, but if I do, I try to make a left to go to Highway fifty, you're sitting, traffic's flying by. Lakeview was the street known for Silver Lake, Salem, whatever the police department was to sit there as people came in off of Highway fifty. So people slowed down. It was nice. Now, you, you sit and wait forever between, you know, the morning commute and evening commute and even sometimes lunchtime. So, you know, I would really ask the board, uh, to reject the proposal of nineteen homes. Um, I mean, that's a minimum of thirty-eight cars. That's not including teenage drivers. So, you know, would you want that coming out right across from you as you're trying to get out of your driveway every day with children that used to play in the street, which won't be playing in the street anymore? Um, we have flooded three times. So that is also a concern. We made, um, large improvements to our home, replacing drain tiles to try and fix that, but it has still has happened. So, you know, also concern for the wildlife. We've seen wildlife in that area. We've seen deers. We have an owl that comes and lands on an antenna right next door to us now. Um, I don't wanna see that go away. I'd like to see the more green space and less homes. Um, I think
That's the three minutes. I'm sorry.
I think our showing, you know, speaks loudly tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Neville, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Sandy Neville, ten eighty-one Eastwood Drive. Um, I too also came from Chicago to a quiet town that I loved. And, uh, putting in all these houses is not something we're looking forward to, as I was told. You can't even get off of, uh, Manor with all the traffic that's going there. Now you're gonna add all these other cars. Okay, what I also wanna state is on, excuse me, one minute. On your website and your mailings, you states that, uh, you wanna build trust leading with transparency. Um, with, uh, her mentioning it was, they came with five houses and you wanted nineteen. That's really upsetting. You also state that leadership that puts the community first always. That's on the last email that you sent, I think in August. Nineteenth, I think it was. It's also on your website. So you should listen to the people here. This is what we want. We voted you in to be our voices and to, and to go with what, uh, we want and what we expect from you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Paul Maggio, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Paul Maggio, six nine four, North Cogswell Drive. My wife and I, own the property, uh, adjoining Bears across, uh, Highway B. This is the eight point three parcel, um, in, uh, Silver Lake. So, um, the current zoning in that whole neighborhood is an R-three zoning. So that's, uh, twenty thousand square feet lots, a hundred foot wide. I believe from looking at the map, I couldn't measure across, but I believe maybe one or two of those lots, um, go to that zoning that's currently there. So, um, Bear bought an R-three zone property. They should develop an R-three zone property. They're asking to upzone this property. So I would love a business too where I could buy something for twenty dollars, get it, change the zoning and sell it for a hundred. Um, but who's gonna pay for this upzoning that we're, that they're asking for to build all these homes in here? It's not gonna be Bear, but they're gonna be laughing all the way to the bank. It's gonna be the people that live around here. And, um, the community. So, um, I guess, you know, just listening to other people talk here, you know, there's an issue about quality of life, issues of flooding, change in the rural lifestyle, safety, traffic. I mean, these are all concerns with overbuilding. I mean, five homes compared to twenty-one in there, that's a big difference. So I guess I'm asking is, you know, again, the, uh, comment about building trust. I know there's a lot of that that's trying to happen in this community right now. But let's think about community before developers and not change this zoning to, uh, increase the density and amount of building that's going in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Rodifer, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Dennis Rodifer. I live at six oh seven East Dell's Road. When I retired from the Navy thirty years ago, I bought that property because it was quiet, peaceful. Next to me was nothing but a dense wood that I was informed belonged to the county. So that'd never be built on. Well, then the property got sold to Bear and they come in and they took that dense woods and took a lot of the, the trees, removed it, the brush, underbrush. When I first moved in, my back deck was like a home to thousands of different birds, all different colors and all different sizes. They no longer come around after that woods was tore down. But even worse, financial impact on me, whenever it's, whenever it storms and the flooding goes and my, and the power gets lost, like it always does there at the end of Dell's Road. And my sump pump doesn't handle the load. And the next thing I know, I got a foot of water down my basement. I'm disabled. It almost killed me last time to try to keep up with that water because I was the only one home. I just can't wait till somebody gets home to take care of it. Uh, the next issue I would like to address is the EPA and the sewer system. The last time you all did this big development down past School, School Street, all of a sudden, our sewage systems was being overtaxed. And we were being charged fines from the EPA because of the blend that was being released into the river. And this is another serious impact on us. Because again, we got to upgrade whatever system it is to handle the load. And where does that come from? That comes from our pockets to I'm sorry. And the income that I have to pay, I'm on a, I'm, like I said, I'm retired from the Navy. I'm on a, uh, limited, uh, income. And I just can't afford any more tax raises, any more sewage fees raises. It's just ridiculous how, 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 how they keep climbing. And we keep being told that, well, the more people we get in, we'll get more tax dollars. Well, we've been taxed even more from the last time when you said that to us. And all of a sudden, we let all that building go on and now my, my, my taxes have gone up two thousand dollars. Okay, where was the savings of bringing more homes there? More homes are there, more families are there.
Mr. Dennis, I'm sorry. That's the three minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Kathleen on 83rd Street, I can't read your last name. I'm sorry. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record. No, Kathleen, last name starts with a G.
Okay, we will move on from public comment and go into president's comments. I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight and uh expressing your concerns. That's why we're here. So um, as uh Sandy stated, we are trying to work more transparently and to be different and to do better. So uh, this meeting was to be proactive, to hear all of you ahead of the public hearings and public approvals. Um, these con- these are just concepts at this point. The village board has not um seen them in depth. So we have not even given any feedback to Bear. That is what tonight is for, is to have, uh, to provide some meaningful feedback to them uh before they go on to their final designs. Um, there are still many steps to be taken, including going before the planning commission, which there will be public hearings for that and we'll give you another opportunity for you all to come together and to see what their final proposals are. And then, you know, depending on what the plan commission does, it, it does come to the board. I'm sorry, we can't take anymore back and forth. Um, so that is what we're here for. So uh, again, just want to state that uh there is a process and procedure for them to go through. So tonight is just for the board to hear and see these proposals and give our feedback on what we would like, if there's anything to change. I also want to take a moment to thank all of our residents and our staff for uh participating and working in Salem Lakes Community Days. Um, unfortunately, we didn't have as good a turnout as we had last year, I think, because it was extremely hot and humid well into the um, I think mid 90s. Uh, so um, we may look at moving that more into being a fall event so that we can hopefully get better um participation on that. But I just want to say thank you. A lot of planning and work went into that and um, everybody uh that I talked to when I was there, they did have a good time despite the heat. So we'll go on to number eight, presentations, petitions, communication, discussion and possible action on the following, 8.1, presentation by Ellers on the process of tax increment financing.
All right. Good evening. So this evening we have Ellers with us. And so just to reiterate what President Bueker had stated, tonight is merely concepts. This is the village doing things differently. This is us trying to bring ideas forward early and often in, in the process, prior to any approvals being given or shovels going in the ground. Nothing has been approved at this point. This is merely just concepts, discussion, so that we can provide Bear some additional feedback on what do you like, what don't you like? But also because our community hasn't had development in a very long time, it's really good to reset the stage and understand what is tax increment financing? How is it used? And what are the benefits or the, the pros and the cons of using tax increment financing? And so this evening we do have Ellers here with us who will give that presentation. Again, nothing this evening is for decisions. It's nearly just for learning. So, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Cameron. I'm a senior municipal advisor with Ellers and happy to walk through the presentation up on screen, which is just uh basics of tax incremental financing. So think of this as a kind of a, a 101 type, type course in terms of just how does tax incremental financing work? Uh, what are the uh, the statutory uh rules around it? Um, and things to consider as uh you consider these different development proposals and where uh tax incremental financing might fit in. If you go to the next page, thank you. Um, in terms of it as an economic development tool, tax incremental financing or TIF, uh, really is the, the primary tool in the toolbox for municipalities to uh attract or retain economic development across the state of Wisconsin. Currently, uh, there's approximately 1,400 act, active tax incremental finance districts uh across the state. Um, beyond that, there really is no other uh funding sources available at the local level to um attract or retain economic development. Wisconsin is, is not alone in using tax incremental finance uh type, type powers. There's 49 states in the District of Columbia that allow some form of tax incremental financing. Uh, currently Arizona is the only state that does not permit uh tax incremental financing. Next page. So you'll hear different acronyms and you may have read about different acronyms. If you've looked into tax incremental financing, you'll hear TID, TIF, what's the difference? We'll talk through that this evening. Um, TIF is uh tax incremental financing and it really is the mechanism uh that generates revenue to pay for eligible project costs within a specific geographic area. The geographic area where tax incremental financing is being deployed is referred to as uh a tax incremental district or TID. Okay? So that is the geographic area where tax incremental financing is being used. When a tax incremental finance district is created, part of the requirement for creating the district is, is going through the creation of a project plan. In that project plan, it outlines the geographic area uh of the uh, the, the district. That district has to be contiguous in nature, so you cannot leapfrog uh and, and include different properties. It also has to contain the whole parcel. Um, next page. So how does uh tax incremental financing work in the state of Wisconsin? I think this one page, uh, in my opinion summarizes tax incremental financing better than just about anything else I've, I've seen. Um, so when a TIF district is created, the property values within that geographic area at the time the district is created is referred to as the base uh property value. And taxes, uh, and, and one of the, the things to consider within a tax incremental finance district is being included in a tax incremental finance district does not change the way a property is taxed. It really just changes uh how those tax revenues uh flow. So the base property value at the time the district is created, that existing property value is frozen for the life of the TIF district, whether that be 20 years or 27 years, depending on the type of the district. Uh, we'll talk about here next, but the property uh, uh, tax revenue on that base property value will continue to go to the village and the county and the technical college and the school district as it normally does. So in this example, and this is purely hypothetical in nature, the total tax rate uh for illustration purposes is an even $20 per thousand. So it breaks down to $6.50 to the municipality, $4 per thousand to the county, $7.50 per thousand to the school district and $2, $2 per thousand to the, to the technical college. Any value after the TIF district is created over and above the base property value is referred to as tax increment uh value. And the, again, the property as it's taxed or proper series of properties within the TIF district's boundary as it's taxed will continue to be taxed at that $20 per thousand, just as the base, the value of all baseline uh property uh within the district. But the difference is the tax increment revenue, the property uh tax revenue received on that purple uh area, that tax, that tax increment value uh stays within the municipality, specifically stays within the tax incremental finance district to pay for eligible project costs. And that in a nutshell is how tax incremental financing works. You're able to use the uh taxing authority of the overlapping taxing jurisdictions to pay for eligible project costs within the geographic boundary of the TIF district. And the whole principle behind that is uh the but for test. And that is but for the use of tax incremental financing, the development either wouldn't occur, would not occur in the manner and quality that the village would like to see, or would not occur within a timeline that the village would like to see. So uh that, meeting that but for test, that really is uh the responsibility of, of the municipality bringing forth the uh, the TID project plan and it is voted on by the overlapping taxing jurisdictions uh, uh, made up of what's called the joint review board. We'll talk about that here as we, as we go along. If you go to the next page, there's a number of different district types when a TIF district is, is created. Um, there are really five different uh potential types of TIF districts that uh are in existence in the state of Wisconsin. And when the TIF district is created in the project plan, it'll specify the type of tax incremental finance district that uh is being created here. Likely uh within the context of these different developments, you're, you're considering a mixed-use tax incremental finance district, which is the first one on the chart. Uh, that is the most common type of tax incremental finance district in Wisconsin. It has a maximum lifespan under state law of 20 years. At least 50% of the land use within that TIF district boundary has to be suitable for a combination of industrial, commercial and qualifying residential uses. And you have to have a mixture of land uses. You cannot just create a purely residential tax incremental finance district, for example. Within the uh context of a mixed-use district, there is uh allowable uh land. Um, also with a maximum lifespan of 20 years is an industrial TIF district and at least 50% of the land use has to be zoned and suitable for industrial development. There is not uh an allowable uh requirement for newly planted residential development, uh, as is for any of the other different types of TIF districts that are shown on this chart. There's a blighted conservation rehab and environmental TIF districts, all that have uh longer lifespans just based on the challenges of the sites that you might find with blighted or properties that are in need of significant uh rehabilitation or that are dealing with significant environmental remediation needs. So those have 27-year maximum lifespans. Go to the next page. Um, there's a number of different eligible project costs under state statute that uh can be brought into uh a TIF district project plan. Um, what's most common within TIF districts is that uh certainly uh your public works type improvements, uh, water, sewer, uh streets, the most tax incremental finance uh, uh sites lack necessary infrastructure in order to develop. So certainly uh public works and other types of improvements are TID eligible expenses to the extent they benefit the district. Financing uh costs related to borrowing for those types of projects, real property assembly or what's commonly referred to as land write-down costs. So if the village, for example, had to purchase property and then would choose to dedicate that at a reduced cost to developer to try to uh incentivize development, the difference between what you purchased it for and what you're uh, uh, selling it to the developer for is referred to as the land write-down cost. Professional services, legal engineering, uh, our costs for, for uh creating the uh project plan. Those are all eligible TIF expenses on an annual basis. There's administrative and organizational type expenses. There's an annual reporting requirement. There's a portion of costs uh within your audit that are related to the TIF district. Those are eligible expenses over the lifespan of the TID. Uh, contributions to a community development or redevelopment authority, to the extent uh those are applicable. Uh, relocation costs to the extent that that is uh being entertained as part of any uh active TIF. Uh, prorated share of utility uh infrastructure costs or municipality-wide infrastructure costs. An example would be, say, developments coming in, we need a new well uh in order to provide adequate water supply service to that uh, uh, development, but also it benefits the municipality as a whole. The prorated share that benefits just the TIF district could be an eligible expense. The remaining costs would be borne by the utility. Same thing on the sanitary sewer side. If, say, for example, the wastewater treatment plant had to be expanded, the prorated share of uh, the treatment plant expansion cost could be an eligible expense. Crash, cash grants or development incentives uh are eligible expense. So to the extent the developer is taking on uh project costs as opposed to the municipality taking on infrastructure project costs, uh, those costs once undertaken uh could be uh reimbursed back to the developer through the tax incremental finance district. Environmental remediation costs and then projects within a half-mile uh radius that directly benefit the TIF district can also be uh eligible project costs. On the flip side, there's a number of prohibited project costs on the next page. Thank you who for whoever is following along with me. Um, from a prohibited standpoint, constructing or expanding municipal buildings, so say like a village hall, for example, or park-type facilities, those are prohibited project expenses under uh state law. Facilities that are financed specifically with user fees, so example, back to that example, the wastewater treatment facility, the, the non-prorated share of the cost that benefits the municipality, no different than, say, constructing or building a municipal facility. Those are ineligible project expenses. Uh, just charging general governmental expenses that are unrelated to a TIF district. TIF district is not a, a mechanism for solving levy limit woes or other budget uh shortfalls. Again, it is really for the purpose of attracting or retaining economic development. Uh, and then costs associated with newly planted residential development, with the exception of uh mixed-use development where you've got 35% of the maximum land use area of the TIF district boundary as being eligible to uh meet um newly planted residential development. If you go to the next page, so switching gears a little bit in terms of funding eligible project costs and what are the options? So uh if you go through and create a TIF district and you specify, here's our, here's our budget, here's the development we're expecting and the, the revenue that's going to be generated through property taxes over that lifespan and uh compared to the project expenses, project goes to TIF district moves forward. And now you're into implementation stage. So there's a number of different ways to go about taking on project costs and they generally kind of break down into two different buckets. Either the municipality fronts the costs or the developer uh, uh, potentially fronts those costs or you take those project costs on, on a pay-as-you-go basis. So it still might be the municipality taking on the project costs, but you're doing it more on a pay-as-you-go type basis. So what's the difference between the two? So in a uh kind of fronting the cost situation, the municipality would issue general obligation or revenue uh bond debt to do the uh project and use the tick tax increment uh revenue on an annual basis to pay the principal and interest expenses. In a pay-as-you-go type format, you use the uh TIF revenue stream and accumulated balances to pay uh project expenses or uh the developer uh agrees to front the costs that are necessary to allow the development to occur and then is paid back uh as tax increment revenue is generated uh within the development. Both have pros and cons associated with them. Uh, from the municipality fronting the cost stay standpoint, uh, obviously in that type of a situation, the risk, it belongs to the municipality. So if the, if the village is taking on general obligation debt and is relying upon that tax increment revenue to be able to pay the principal and interest, interest expenses, it really at the end of the day is the municipality's debt. So if the development does not follow through, um, the principal and interest payments are the responsibility of the municipality. And there's a number of protections that you can institute to, to safeguard against that through different development agreements. But the bottom line is that if you're taking on those project expenses, the principal and interest payments are the responsibility of the municipality. From a pay-as-you-go standpoint, um, oftentimes if you're, if you're, still the municipality is the one taking on those project costs and you're waiting for fund balances to accumulate within the TIF district, that can take a number of years. Oftentimes, infrastructure-type expenses are necessary at the very front end of a TIF district's life in order for development to occur. So you might need roads, you might need water, you might need sewer in order for the uh, uh, development to occur. That's needed year one. So oftentimes what might be required is to say, we're not, we're, we're not willing or we're not able to borrow for those funds because we've got other borrowing needs. Uh, so the developer takes on those uh expenses and enters into a development agreement with the village. Uh, per the terms of the agreement, as tax increment revenue is being made available uh as that development occurs or redevelopment occurs, uh, that tax increment revenue then is uh per the terms of a development agreement is made available annually to the uh developer to help offset those, those project costs. But that all gets specified through a uh development agreement, which is required under state law in a situation like that. It's best practice anyway, but it would be required in a It's best practice anyway, but it would be required in a situation like that to pay for the project costs. The difference between that is, in a, in a pay-as-you-go type format, where the developer is taking on those costs, and the village and municipality are entering into a development agreement, that does not constitute general obligation debt. Again, because there's an annual appropriation from the village to the, to the developer, per the terms of the development agreement, to pay for those eligible expenses. And that's a nice feature in terms of preserving your general obligation borrowing capacity, because it is finite in nature for, for other types of infrastructure projects. It also shifts the burden in terms of risk from the municipality to the developer. Go to the next page. And talked a little bit at the beginning about the importance of that but-for test. And again, that's kind of the key linchpin for using tax incremental financing across the state of Wisconsin. So that is but for, the use of tax incremental financing, the developer either wouldn't occur, wouldn't occur in the manner and quality that the village would like to see, or the development wouldn't occur in a timeline fashion that the village would like to see. Satisfaction for meeting that but-for test really is key to the responsible use of tax incremental financing across the state of Wisconsin. TIF is, is not an entitlement. It is not meant to be a handout for development. Again, it is needed to meet extraordinary infrastructure costs or extraordinary site development expenses in order for the development to occur. Who meets, or who determines whether that is met? That, again, is really local due diligence process. So the, really, the responsibility of the municipality as you're going through the creation of the TIF district, and then ultimately entering into a development agreement with the developer. And it is ultimately, in terms of the review process, there's a number of steps to creating a, a tax incremental finance district. But the last one is an approval of that Joint Review Board. And that's a five-member board made up of the overlapping taxing jurisdictions within the village. So there's a representative from the, from the village. It's, it's generally speaking, usually the village president, but not always. There's a public member that is recommended by the village, but voted on by the other overlapping taxing jurisdiction members of that Joint Review Board. There's a representative from the school district, the tech college, and the county. And, and their responsibility is an up or down vote, yes or no, as to whether or not the project plan meets that but-for test. So there's a number of different challenges in the marketplace. And just, you know, a few thoughts from our perspective as we work for a number of municipalities across the state of Wisconsin and deal with tax incremental financing on a day-in and day-out basis. So some of the, the challenges that we're seeing out in the marketplace currently is extraordinary construction costs, as well as debt insurance, rising interest rate environment over the last couple of years, especially compared to the historically low interest rate environment we operated under for the last decade prior to, to rates coming up a few years ago. Significant loan underwriting expenses as it pertains to obtaining financing. You've got market rents that are generally unable to keep up with the rising cost of construction and operating cost increases, thereby creating a gap between a developer's sources and uses of, of funding in, in most situations. You've also got declining tax rates due to levy limit constraints. So by and large, municipalities can increase their property tax levy on an annual basis only by the percentage increase in net new construction, and then zero if there is no net new construction in a, any one given year. However, we've seen increasing property value through, through increased equalized values. So when you have a relatively stagnant property tax levy and increasing property tax values, your tax levy divided by your total TID-out equalized value gets your mill rate. If your property value is rising, but your levy is staying stagnant, your property tax rate drops over, over time. Economic appreciation really drives down equalized tax rates, which affects TIF district support. So as property tax rates go down, that affects the amount of cash coming into the tax incremental finance district over time. And all of this leads to long TIF payback periods. I think, you know, previous to some of these challenges coming forward over the last, in some cases, decade in terms of buildup, it was much more common through project plans to see faster paybacks for tax incremental finance districts. It's more common in today's environment to see a bit longer TIF district payback. But you want to see a TIF district certainly pay back and close sooner than that 20-year lifespan as you go through the, the planning process. So next slide, in terms of just how do you justify the use of tax incremental finance? And how do you really, again, kind of meet that but-for test? One of the best practices that's emerged over the last several years is to do what's called a project performa analysis, and that is an independent third-party review of a developer's sources and uses. So a developer comes forward in this type, type of situation, saying, hey, we, we want to develop. We need assistance in order to do that. Otherwise, the development wouldn't occur. How do you vet that? How do you know that that's true? Going through a performa analysis is one way to, to go about doing that. Justifying and going deep into developer's sources and uses, looking at the project information that is being forward, being brought forward to determine whether or not the, the need for tax incremental finance is, is, is necessary. And oftentimes, there's a pretty detailed performa cash flow analysis that's prepared over generally a 10-year period of time, but could be longer or shorter depending on, you know, the, the development situation. But it looks at the performa with and without the use of tax incremental financing, compares it against other similar developments with similar type situations, and measures a developer's rate of return. And that can be measured a number of different ways. There's a cash-on-cash, cash-on-cost, internal kind of different rates of return factors that can be evaluated in a development-type situation to determine, number one, is tax incremental finance assistance necessary? And is it necessary at the level that the developer is claiming it is? And oftentimes, there's, there's a significant amount of back and forth, and you, you end up at a situation where you're, you're providing assistance, if you are, at a different level than what you may have started at. Not always, but in, in a lot of cases. But that's not the only approach. There's other approaches that can be considered as well. TIF assistance could be tied to specific extraordinary private costs, say, environmental remediation, soil-type remediation, blight removal, demolition of specific structures. I had a, a situation that, that I worked on near the Wisconsin River, up in the Baraboo area, where the main street butts the Wisconsin River, some significant grading issues. So multifamily structure that wanted to come in, but there was extraordinary costs for, for building footings into, you know, the side of the, the river basin, underground parking that was extraordinary, so that the development incentive in that case was tied specifically to that, that cost. Could be tied also to just the cost of infrastructure. We recognize, or the board could recognize, that we lack infrastructure within the site. It needs water, it needs sewer. Whatever the case may be, that incentive is tied specifically to those infrastructure costs, and dollar for dollar. Going to the next page is the end. So certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know you've got a number of items on the agenda. So if there are no questions, we could always happy to come back, always happy to do additional education. I know it's a lot to take in tonight. And again, this is, it sounds like the start of the process. So happy to answer questions, or happy to let you ponder as well.
So earlier in your presentation, you had stated like a three-unit-per-acre threshold. Was that you have to have three units per acre or more? Or if you don't have three units per acre, it doesn't qualify? How does that apply?
The, the latter. So if you have density that is less than three units per acre, under state law, you would not be able to create a tax incremental finance district in that situation.
Okay. And, and I, I think that, for the benefit of some people in the audience, you had clearly stated that this type of mechanism is not for a residential-only development.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have questions too. I'm just reading through them all to find out which ones are the right ones. You said something about shifting the burden from the village to the developer. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. So that, in terms of just considering the eligible project expenses within a project plan, and then how you're going to go about taking on those expenses? So say, for example, the site wax water. So you got to run water main to it. The question of how do you go about taking on that expense is kind of the next logical step, once the, the TIF district is created. The village could take on that debt and say, we'll borrow for the water main. We'll enter into development agreements. Make sure you guarantee us the, the tax revenue on an annual basis, but we'll use that tax increment revenue to pay the principal and interest payments over a 10-year payback or 20-year payback, whatever you, you know, you enter into as you, as you go out to market. The key there is you want to make sure that the increment stream coming in is matching, or hopefully exceeding, the principal and interest payments on the debt. Okay? So that's, the risk there is if the development doesn't proceed, takes significantly longer, we enter into recession, whatever the, whatever the situation is, the, the bottom line is that the debt, once taken on by the village, is the responsibility of the village. So that's an important concept to understand. Conversely, shifting the risk to the developer, saying, okay, we're not willing to do the water main extension. We'll take the water, when you, when you do it, you can dedicate it to the water utility. We'll take, you know, we'll build it to, to village specs. We'll take on the water main over, over time, but you pay for it. We'll use the tax increment revenue as it's generated over time to pay that, that cost, pay you back for that cost. So we're not taking on the debt. We don't have principal and interest payments from the municipality side. The developer is either raising equity or doing a combination of debt and equity to, to get to, to where they need to be to, to borrow for those expenses or take on those expenses, and then uses the TIF district to pay back that cost over time. In, in a lot of cases, depending on the, the makeup of the expenses within the TIF district, both situations might be deployed. Municipalities, probably pre-Great Recession, you know, early 2000s, late 90s, it was much more common for the municipality to say, take on all of the upfront financing, build it and they will come type, type philosophy. Coming out of the, the Great Recession, what is much more common these days is to enter into a Pago-type situation, or do a combination thereof. Maybe there's a, a larger backbone infrastructure that might be needed that benefits not just that specific development, but larger development within the TIF district. Might be more appropriate for the village to borrow in that type of situation. And then for the developer, or series of developers, to do the site infrastructure that's needed, or set a series of infra- infrastructure that's needed within their specific development.
You answered a bunch of my questions there. I know I have more.
So quick one that I have is, everything you said tonight seems to indicate, like as an qualifier and eligibility, is there any requirement to enter into a TIF district by municipality with a developer? Or just strictly, just if, if it seems appropriate, then, and we go through those?
You're not required to enter into a TIF district with, with a developer. Really, what the developer is saying in those types of situations is, we've got extraordinary infrastructure costs, or there's extraordinary costs for, for the development to occur. Or it could also be that we're offering housing at a specific price point, because that's really what'll go in the municipality, or that's what the municipality wants to see. Might want to see a mixture of different, you know, housing at different price points, for example. But in order to do that, there's a gap between the revenue that would be coming in and the cost going out. And we recognize that, and it's a goal of the municipality to meet that goal, to, to provide that type of level of housing. But there is absolutely no requirement to enter into tax incremental finance district. TIF district, again, back at the very beginning, the, a tax incremental financing is a tool. It makes those project costs, eligible project costs, assuming they move forward and the development moves forward, allows a repayment mechanism. It is not a, a policy. Again, you, you've got a lot of things to consider as these different types of developments move forward. The tax incremental financing is really the tool by which you can recover eligible project expenses.
Thank you very much.
I have more. Okay. So I, I just need to rephrase what you said. So it sounds like without the TIF, the developer has to take on the cost of the infrastructure, which then increase the value of homes? Or not the value, but the cost to build the homes?
Well, the infrastructure is needed in order for the development to occur.
And so then, if we don't have or authorize or do the TIF, then they, they have to include that in the cost of homes, right?
Right. Well, and, and first of all, have to be willing to, to do the development in, in general. So oftentimes, you know, the developer at the outset of a project is evaluating their sources and uses, looking at what sort of level rate of return, and if it's significantly diminished, some cases negative, obviously, no, no business owner is going to proceed with a situation like that. You obviously are wanting to proceed to have profit.
I have two. Okay, thanks. What happens if, if we do do the tax, the TIF? What happens if they don't finish the project?
You mean start like a development project and, and don't finish it?
Developer doesn't finish the, the 19 homes, let's just say.
Sure. So in a Pago-type situation, if there's infrastructure costs, obviously, you're not out anything. You didn't put any of the infrastructure in. But, but in most cases, you've got provisions in development agreements to help make sure that the development either gets to the finish line or gives the municipality the ability to help turn that development over to another developer who will finish the 19 homes in that type of situation. So, you know, the, the project plan and the creation of the TIF is, again, just kind of one step in the process. One of the other really important steps is entering into some level of a development agreement to, to help safeguard and make sure that you get not only increment stream to pay for eligible expenses, but at the end of the day, a product that the village wants and is, is proud of.
And then just jumping here real quick, if I understand correctly, on the surface, I'm not putting you on the spot, but when you, when you use the example of 19 homes, based on the 35%, a 19-home-only subdivision with no commercial, no industrial, would not be qualified for this type of approach?
You, you'd need a mixture of other land uses. So you'd have to draw the TIF district boundary such that you're picking up commercial or industrial. So you've got a combination of, of land uses. It's not allowable under state law to have a purely residential TIF district.
It's just asked to help keep the, keep it clean in the room what people are hearing.
It's important to note that only one of the three concepts you'll be hearing this evening is asking for TIF to be considered. That is the third one on your agenda this evening. The first two are not asking for TIF to be considered. So it's the larger development on 83 is the one that is, is asking for it to be considered. I think the other two things to be of note is the developer's agreement. If the board decides TIF is something you would want to consider, the developer's agreement is essential, absolutely has to happen. And the second thing is the review of the performa is absolutely necessary. That performa tells you that difference, that gap. And so you wouldn't provide TIF greater than that gap. And then that gap is determined through the full financial review, and LRS helps to make sure that we are not providing anything greater than the absolute minimum that is required.
That almost answered my last question. Who does the performa?
LRS typically, we typically do the performa analysis in addition to, or as part of the, the TIF project plan creation process. What's common is, you know, we work solely for you. We, we are your municipal advisor, which means we have a fiduciary duty to the, to the village. But in a, in a performa-type analysis situation, what's common is for the village to turn around and say, if you, if this is being required because of this development, you're, you're paying for it. So
Thank you.
We, we, yeah. Our, our responsibility is with you, but that's common in that type of situation.
2015, Towne and Salem did a TIF with LRS, is our partner in that, but we also... we also partnered with the Kenosha Area Business Alliance and we bought the property next to our fire station and utility utility building or in on highway seat. Now, the difference there is we own the property. So we didn't get any tax revenue, as you mentioned, generally, when these tips occur, it might be on A1 farmland, so the taxes are really low. But those taxes continue throughout the 20 years lifespan, and that's what ours was with our business park. And that that will is matures in 2035. And currently, it appears that it'll pay for itself five years early. All the infrastructure that we put in, that's what we're paying on those taxes.
This case, if the village board did want to entertain the pro forma review with Ellers, the village would pass on that cost to Bear and we would ask Bear to cover that cost. We would, we would hire Ellers to do it, but Bear would cover the cost of the full pro forma review, not the village.
So if we pay for the infrastructure, you know, development of 100 homes or whatever, that cost is, how are we assured that the developers are taking on some of that cost to his home prices?
Not sure I quite follow the question.
I think maybe I'll take a stab at it, Dennis, is that are the house prices going to reflect? How do we know if the house prices will be reflect not having to pay for that infrastructure?
Well, I mean, certainly the the developer wants to make sure things are going to occur and product is going to move. But but again, through a development agreement, you can have provisions in there to, you know, help ensure that price points are are going to be offered within the mixture of homes that you that you want. But part of the the need for creating and and moving forward with it is is because of that extraordinary infrastructure cost. So really what the developer is saying is if we have to pass that cost on, we won't we won't be able to develop.
I've seen the example you used, John, where you had to put in pilings along the river. That's abnormal.
Right.
But just on regular farmland to do it, it's not pretty abnormal. There's nothing there that's that we caused that cost to be exhausted. It's more, it would be normal cost, so.
Infrastructure costs.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I took turn your mic. Turn your mic.
All right, we got farmland. Let's say, let's say, $10,000. Okay, the improvement goes up to $100,000. Got taxes that you you're still paying taxes on the $10,000, correct?
So so if his property value would go up from 10,000 to 100,000, he's paying taxes on 100,000. So the difference is where the tax revenue goes.
Right.
So the tax revenue, so saying that back to that example, that $20,000, on the 10,000 that it was valued at, that's the base, the base property value. Tax revenue on that 10,000 will go to the village, the tech college, the county, the school district. The tax revenue on the 90,000 will stay with the village specifically within the TIF district.
Just to pay for the improvements.
Correct.
Now, that never gets paid back.
I don't, I don't follow.
Schools don't get any money back out of that.
So you're right, on the incremental value, they're not getting, they're they're foregoing their taxing authority essentially on that 90,000 because they recognize that but for the use of tax incremental finances assistance, it'll stay farmland. Nothing will happen. So at the end of the TIF district's life, that's when the school district will see, will see benefit. One, if the TIF district closes with a positive fund balance, that positive fund balance is distributed to all of the overlapping taxing jurisdictions in proportion to the share of tax revenue that's in the statement of taxes for the municipality. Conversely, if the TIF district closes with outstanding liabilities, those liabilities remain only with the the municipality. So the overlapping taxing jurisdictions get to share in the success, but are not on the hook for the liability if there is one. The other thing is at the end of a TIF district's life, the tid out value, which is what the mill rate is established on, that will that'll go up. So school districts, for example, with where you have tax incremental financing are are generally held harmless over a TIF district's life. So school districts get aid from a mixture of sources. Property taxes and state aid are kind of the two two major ones. So when you have a TIF district, what you'll see is during the TIF district's life, less tax revenue, because obviously they're they're foregoing that to pay for those eligible project costs. But state aid will step in and keep the the district level. When the TIF district closes, you'll see that property tax revenue go up, but the state shared revenue will come back down. So again, the TIP, the school district will will be remain harmless from a finance perspective.
I have a question just behind you. I think that would just be good to add to this discussion and on that particular area. The body that makes the decision, which includes the schools, the tech colleges, the communities, I mean, they have to be in favor of of the whole. They have to agree to it, which means that they're aware that they're going to forego the the increase in taxes for that development until it ends. And so they're part of that. And maybe you, my question for you is, could you just add a little information for the board as to that extension availability, that change in the law that allows for the extension for affordable housing?
Sure. So at the time, TIF district is getting ready to close, under state law, you can extend the life of it by one year and use that additional incremental revenue to help pay for affordable housing anywhere in the municipality. So it's a, it's a nice feature that a number of municipalities have utilized over the last several years. It's a relatively new feature in in tax or criminal financing, but you're not beholden to just that specific geographic area. So if there's project costs or I know in more urban areas, City Waukesha, for example, they've used the one year housing extension to create a number of different programs available to existing homeowners to help with home improvements, other types of energy efficiency type projects that that they wouldn't otherwise be able to 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 offer before. So it's a nice feature. If you so choose to use it, totally voluntary if you choose to do it.
So I'm going to go back to what Andy also just said a second ago, just because I want to make sure there's clarity. So the village board, if you decide you would like to use the tool of TIP, cannot make the decision in a vacuum. The other taxing entities would be at the table and would help you to make that decision. So if if we decide, the board decides that you would like to use it on the Highway 83 project, the schools would have a seat at the table and would be a part of the decision. You're not making it in a vacuum. They would have to say, okay, too.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, we will go on to to the bear items now. And I just want to remind everyone in the audience that this is not a public hearing, so therefore this is listening only. Public hearing will come later and you'll have a chance, you can have a chance at that time to ask questions and get those answers. Eight point two, discussion on conceptual development plan submitted by Bear Development on June 9th, 2025, for a single family home development preliminarily known as Salem Hills Edition. Tax parcel 7041200540421 and 7041200540338. For informational purposes only, these parcels are located on the north side of State Highway 50, approximately 2,100 feet east of County Highway B, and I'm going to have Bear come up and present their proposals. And then hi, who's gonna, Jonah, is that you? Okay, so after you do this one, then we'll read the next agenda item and go into it. So go ahead.
All right, good evening. Jonah Hetland, 4015 80th Street, Kenosha, Wisconsin. I'm going to take the first two here, just to reminder this, the first one Salem Hills, there is no TIF involved with this one, as mentioned. So I'm here looking for some feedback. We have a 40 acre parcel that abuts the existing Salem Hills subdivision. The property is currently zoned R2 conservancy and a little bit of PR1. We are currently proposing an 11 lot subdivision, which would be located off of a private road that we would construct and that our HOA would would maintain. Average lot size would be about three and a half acres. The smallest lot that we currently have shown is about an acre and a half, and the largest one being 12 acres, which is all the way down in the south end that abuts Highway 50. Ten of these lots would have driveways off of this new private road that we would that we would connect to the Salem Hills subdivision. The large 12 acre lot would have a driveway directly off of Highway 50 at the existing access point that is there right now. All lots will be served by private septic systems and private wells. We have looked at this site very carefully to try to minimize the impact to the natural features. And we have, we do have one minor wetland impact through the center where this private road would cross through. We would be looking at rezoning a few of the areas. Again, most of this is already zoned R2. But I would be looking to rezone the existing PR1 back to to R2. We actually just did a very similar development just northeast of this location off of Highway Cave in the Village of Paddock Lake. And it was, it was very successful. We had 13 lots. And in pretty short order, we sold all of those except for four. So we do feel confident that this is a, this development would sell out quick and and start producing some nice tax space for the village. And again, this would be a private road that would be constructed by the developer, paid for by the developer and maintained by the HOA. Looking to answer a couple of questions that came up. One of them being no detention. That's right. This plant doesn't show any outlots for stormwater detention. We have not engineered the site yet. Again, this is at the conceptual stage. And so we're here just looking for feedback. If we were given some favorable recommendations on this, next step would be to spend the money to do some survey work, some engineering work and figure out where the best location on this property would be to to maintain that stormwater detention pond. The park, yeah, you know, I was the one that was here back in 2007 and I did bring that development forward and I think I had 25 lots back then. I did have a road connection down to Highway 50. And at that time, because of the increased number of lots and the smaller lots, we did have a park back there. But with these larger parcels, this demographic and this the size of lot just wouldn't, they don't have a need for a park. So there isn't one shown. I think somebody brought up the concern about flooding. And again, once it's engineered and designed, that would mitigate flooding risk as well with the with the detention pond that we'd be constructing. So I'm here to answer questions and and hopefully get some feedback from the board.
So for the private road over the wetlands area, do you plan on doing a bridge or what do you plan on doing there?
Yeah, it would be, it would be some sort of engineered bridge.
Okay.
Reconstructed.
Did you talk to Wistat about having an entrance off of Highway 50 and what was their answer?
There is an existing drive there right now. And so I believe the parcel has two or three access points that we're allowed to have. Because it's existing, I have not talked to the DOT. That would be something we'd bet out at the next stage.
So it's something you would look into there?
Sure.
I mean, is there a chance that you could change that road to come in off of Highway 50 and not through the the subdivision there?
So again, I think it was 17 or 18 years ago, that was one of the big points of contention was getting that access point over to that meeting. It was a very sharp curve to try to get to that existing median cut. At the time, the Village of Silver Lake opposed it as well. I don't think we'd have to go back to a larger scale development in order to support the cost of something like that to get access to Highway 50.
So you're not going to look into that, though?
Oh, no. So there's two different things. One would be the access point for the one single lot that we have on the south end. It's a 12 acre lot. That's just a residential driveway. There's an existing driveway there right now. The second component, unless I misunderstood, Rita, was would we put a public road connection to Highway 50?
Yes, that's.
And that's much more significant.
And what about the, you heard from some of the residents, your access point from the subdivision into your proposed development area there is not meeting the setbacks on the south side because of its proximity to that house. What are you going to do with that?
You know, that's, I I wasn't aware of that. That's a it may be that it's an outlot, so there wasn't a road setback enforced. That was always looked at as a future connection to the east. I believe if you look at the the land use plan, it does show a road coming through there to the east. I can't speak to the setbacks. Those are privately owned lots and we don't own this. The outlet either.
The comment that was made, it's only 17 and a half feet or something from someone's home here.
I believe that 17 and a half feet would be from the edge of that outlot that's showing up there.
And the other concern was the amount of additional traffic on 284th Street and all the way out that way. So if something could come with the frontage road or off of Highway 15. I didn't hear a lot of complaints about the the actual development other than access to it using that existing road. That's the problem.
Do you have a minimum requirement for the home size on these lots?
I would probably do something similar to what we did at the other couple of developments, probably 2,400 foot minimum for a ranch, 26 to 2,800 feet for a two story.
The other development you were talking about is Duck Pond. Is that the one you?
That's right, Duck Pond Estates.
And if you are using 284th Street to enter it and cause damage or issues, would you guys repair that road?
That's the the road bonds, I think. I'm not, Brad, do you want to answer that? I know that they have to purchase a road bond, but I don't know if that will does that cover 284th? If there was damage due to the construction?
Can address that in a developer's agreement, if that is a concern.
Okay. The other question that I have is there was a resident who brought up that there was supposed to be a park and that all of our subdivisions are supposed to have a park. Is that true? And second follow up to that is, would you be opposed to putting in a park?
You do have the ability to require a private mini park. The lots the size, it's going to be up to the board. It's going to be your decision. If you want to park to benefit these few lots, when you have lots that big, I'd imagine a lot of these lots are going to have play equipment in their own backyards.
But could we get a park anyway at the entrance? For everybody else? That might be nice.
You have every right to ask.
I mean, it it's a, it's going to be a private road, private 11 lot subdivision. If a park would have zero value to the people buying these lots.
Yeah, but if it was one or 11, you know, just change the lot lines a little bit and park.
You know, it's something we'd, we'd, we'd have to look at that. You know, we are working around septic systems and the septic systems only perk in certain locations. And we do have to have minimum lot width requirements. So I mean, if there was a spot that was conducive for a small outlet that would still allow us if a lot density that we need, then I guess it's out of the question. It's just, it's tough until you get into the engineering and get to look at those types of things.
When the town of Salem entered into the agreement with Heritage Estates, we had a park that was mandatory there, but because the lots were acres, they gave the the town $100,000. Not meant to build a park.
Yeah, and and so this this approach is a little bit different here. We are not looking for a public road that we would be dedicating to the municipality for you to maintain. This would be a developer installed road and the 11 homeowners should be paying for the maintenance and upkeep of that road. So that's also a huge benefit to the municipality.
That includes plowing.
Everything. It's a, it's a private road.
And would that does that only go to the edge of the thing? The development or would that go all the way to 284? Would the village be responsible for that? Would the village be responsible for that little section there?
You know, I, I think that's something we'd work out within the developers agreement.
Okay.
Was that a designated access point beforehand or did you buy a piece of property to get into that?
No, that's the, I think Martin or Fred is the village owner.
It's an existing outlet.
No, we do. Oh, I don't know. Okay, sorry. It's been a while since I've looked at it. So it was an outlet dedic, it's there for access to the east when the. Town of Salem and probably Kenosha County at the time approved this development, they earmarked that for future access to the east.
So that's been in there?
Yes, it's always been a long-term vision.
That was put in there for access to the existing property.
So that answers the previous question. Yes, that would be part of the private road that we'd be maintaining.
Okay, and is this a gated community like? Duck Pond or?
We, it doesn't have to be. We haven't gotten that far with it.
Okay.
Well, unlike where Duck Pond is, that. There's, it is gated, yes, but that's just a long road without a lot of homes being impacted, whereas this would be. So there's going to be a lot of extra traffic on two hundred and eighty-fourth street, the surrounding neighborhood. That's going to impact them pretty significantly. So to have both gated, you know, you might. I don't know, it just doesn't seem like the right place for a gated community, but also to have private plowing there. And that's nice. That'll be part of their HOA. But all those people that live there still have to use the other roads to get there. So plowing. I don't know, it's something to consider, because they're all gonna be driving on those roads.
What are your price points for these homes?
For the homes?
Just to guess?
For the lots.
Uh, both.
With a wide range of lot sizes. I would think these would probably start. In the one eighty to one ninety range and go up from there.
For the lot.
Less than.
No, the, the duck ponds, I think our cheapest lot out there was one ninety-nine nine. And that was a three or three and a half acre parcel. So I'm, I'm thinking it's a smaller lot, acre and a half. Little bit less perhaps, but it's a smaller lot as well.
And will you require homes to be built on all these lots or can people buy up multiple lots and put one big?
They would be individual homes, one home per lot. And I guess we don't necessarily have a size maximum. It just has to fit in with the neighborhood. We would have an HOA with an ACC board that would enforce the covenants.
I'm just wondering if somebody says I want lot one and lot two and I only want to build a house, one house.
I suppose we may entertain that now.
Um, Brad, are all of the lots in the neighboring community uh, sold or are there any? Empty ones?
I do not recall any vacant lots.
Are the surrounding lots basically the same size or they larger than yours, what you're proposing?
Salem Hills?
Yeah.
I would think those are probably closer to acre to an acre and a half. For them zoning, your smallest parcel would be about forty thousand square feet.
You just have a two to eight that size.
Right, yes.
And you said engineering, once you start your engineering process, that will. That will focus on flooding issue.
Yeah, we have to engineer the road, the bridge and make sure the water flows where it needs to and we're not gonna create any adverse effects with that. That's the, that's the next stage of this.
Okay, so Brad, there looks like there is an empty lot on um, zero five four zero three four four.
Seventy-second place. Two point nine five acres.
What was that number again?
Zero five four zero three four four.
That's a lot.
Correct, what is that?
As far as we're aware, just detention.
Retention, stormwater? What's the elevation there? I mean, is it, does it get wet there? Do we know?
There are some designated wetlands on it.
Do you suppose that most of the people, and maybe this is happening in Duck Pond. You've got a lot of trees here. Do you suppose that a lot of people that will buy the lots? Will chop down most of the trees or do they want to maintain the trees? What's happening in Duck Pond?
So the Duck Pond has one section of the property that is what we would consider Oak Savannah. Uh, it is conservancy. We do allow for the necessary amount of trees to be taken down to. Um, accommodate the house and if there's gonna be a small detached garage. Uh, most people buying the wooded lots are buying it because of the trees. So they're being very cautious on that. Uh, there is some conservancy here that we are gonna have to protect. Um, if it's zone C one or C two, we're gonna have to be. Uh, thoughtful to that, but if it's within um, say lot one, for example, you do have a strand of trees there. And I don't know if there's any significant environmental significance to, I don't know the type of trees there. But there would, they would have to, they could take down the necessary amount of trees for that house and. We weren't gonna be putting any large-scale uh, conservancy easements unless it's already zoned uh, wetland or primary environmental corridor.
So you said you wouldn't put any conservancy? Say that again.
So unless it's currently zoned wetland or considered wetland or primary environmental corridor. We wouldn't be taking other areas and putting some sort of conservancy easement on it that would prohibit the, the, the ability to build a house on it.
In this community, will there be restrictions for use of the land? Cause some of the lots are big enough to farm, maybe horses or. Build giant snowmobile horses.
So there, there, we would have an active HOA to control those types of things. It is zone residential. I don't believe hobby farms are allowed in R two zoning. Uh, I was going to ask for lot eights, which is a twelve acre parcel to the south. We consider perhaps rezoning that. To, to an A two type zoning if the board would support that. Cause that is the one parcel that is large enough and it's also somewhat separated from the rest of the development that. Could be looked at as a, you know, you could put a pole barn or some sort of hobby type activity there.
Now you gave us two different concepts for this one area. Talk a little bit more about concept two.
Uh, I'm gonna have to refresh my memory on what concept two was.
Well, you're showing here, you gave us.
Version two?
Version two. And it appears that lots five, six and seven.
I'm looking at the Heilgeist property.
Yeah.
Concept two.
Are you guys?
Identical, I think they're duplicates. I think it was just accidentally put in there twice. There's two maps. I think they're exactly the same.
Yeah, I'm only aware of the one concept that we have on this one right now.
Okay.
That is in uh, Silver Lake watershed. Even though you have wetlands there, is there any uh? I guess it'd be worked on later if there's ever be an increase in the amount of water that.
Right, so, so yeah, we're at the concept stage. I'm just here looking for feedback from the board as to whether or not. You would support a eleven lot private road subdivision on this property. And support the rezoning that would go with it. And if I've got enough support from the board, then I take that next step to unleash the engineers and the consultants to take a deep dive into the property. To look at all those, all those things.
My biggest concern is your access point and its proximity to the two houses. Uh, especially the one to the south. Uh, I believe that was you, you canons property? Where they talked right now, the edge of the road is uh, seventeen feet from the house.
Yeah, I, I believe it would be the edge of the outlaw. The road, of course, will be within that outlaw. So I mean, it is, it's not uncommon to have a reduced setback to a secondary street yard. Um, I don't know the history on, on those two houses. You know, we, this would be a rural cross-section. I'd have a um, the, the paved road within the center. We would have some sort of. Ditches on both sides to handle any runoff. I mean, if there is room on both sides, we could perhaps throw a few arvita, some type of trees to help screen it. Um, but I, I, I guess I can't speak to the seventeen and a half foot setback from the outlaw.
Hey Brad, what, what is a typical road here in Silver Lake or Salem Lakes? I'm sorry.
Sixty-six right away, thirty-three pave.
So this one is sixty-three according to the interactive map. And then when you start factoring in that house to the south, you're gonna be asking for a lot from the board. To put that private road in, just based on its proximity to the south.
So the private road would fit within that sixty-three feet?
You're missing my point. The point I'm trying to make to you with the road, the village roads are sixty-six. So now you're talking, you wanna make it smaller than sixty-six. Okay, um, I wish uh, our fire chief were here. Uh, to add some additional information, especially with this bridge. Um, getting an access point in, uh, cause if there is a structured fire. You're talking a, well, first off, tankers are gonna have to come in off of two eighty-fourth. And they're gonna have to uh, pump it from two eighty-fourth in. I'm nervous about that road and I want to see more details to that, specifically the village setbacks, the uh.
The width and whatnot.
And have the chief take a look at it.
Yep. I have a question for Brad. So since, if I understand correctly, even though the picture we're all looking at up on the screen, doesn't have a blue overlay. This roadway going all the way to the, to two eighty-fourth would be entirely private, right?
I don't geographically, you know where you're looking.
Uh, so, so the entrance road to this neighborhood as, as proposed. Um, so do private roads have the same width requirement of sixty-six feet as uh, public roads?
No, they do not.
But the road itself would be engineered similar to what we did at Duck Pond Estates, which they had to make sure the cul-de-sac had the proper turning radius for the full-size fire truck.
So you, you said you need a couple of things to go back with, right? And so one of them, you said, um, if the board was in favor of some rezoning. Can you just, maybe just uh, clearly identify the, the particular items you're hoping to leave information with here on?
So I, I think we'd be looking for feedback that you'd support the eleven lot subdivision on a private road. You would, it's already zoned R two, which is the zoning that I would have remain intact except for lot eight at the south end. That could remain R two, but I thought it'd be better to have that maybe an R one or, or even better an A two because of its size, it's twelve acres.
That's the only one you'd wanna see a potential if how we feel about rezoning?
Correct. And then there is a section. On this property that's zone PR one, because again, when I, when I did this back in two thousand and seven, I had. Um, probably twenty-five or twenty-six lots. I don't remember. It was, there was a lot more and they were smaller. So we did have a, a section that was earmarked for a park. We zoned that PR one at that time. I would be looking to zone that back to R two, cause that is now part of one of these lots that are on the screen right now.
Okay, and so um, this is a little bit hard to hear you, I apologize, but, but the PR one, PR uh, for everybody's uh, benefit. Is, is originally something you zoned back in whatever that was, two thousand and seven, nine, and that PR one stands for park.
Correct.
And you'd be looking to remove that uh, and into this part of one of the, one of the lots.
Right, we would have to remove that to get this to work. It's on, it's located on one of those lots. I don't remember which one it's on.
And then the C one areas, you're not asking to have anything done with those.
So we, we'd most likely have to, to redelineate the C one areas. That would get. The point that would potentially get rezoned as well. If that boundary has changed at all, that would have to get rezoned to meet the current wetland boundary district.
Okay, um, so for staff, I would like to ask if you could look into that outlet.
You have my lot eight?
No, so.
All the outlot with, with the road?
It's on uh.
Seventy-second.
Seventy-second.
What, what is the existing width of that outlaw?
Um, I, somebody said it was sixty-three feet.
The existing outlaw is sixty-six feet.
Oh, it is, it's, it is sixty-six feet. I thought that was, uh, somebody said sixty-three feet.
Um, so I would ask if you could look into the zero five four zero three four four. Um, because Bill and I are looking at it and it does not look like it's uh, low. There does look like there are some wetlands on it, but I guess my question to you is to help make this neighborhood. A little happier, if we could work with that lot, would you be opposed to adding a park there?
Which lot was that Rita?
Um, it's in the, it's uh, it's in the Salem Hills.
It's when you make your first left coming in off of B. Okay, you know, you make a right onto it and you make the left almost directly behind the uh, Dell agenda there.
Yeah, so that lot, just a little information on that and we certainly can look into it, cause we'd need to pull the plat. I think we'll need to pull the plat for Salem Hills. In regards to both outlots, but my recollection is the current outlaw that you're speaking about, the larger one. Is part of the stormwater uh, detention facility for Salem Hills. And. There is an unusual situation that it's actually owned privately as opposed to being owned by the association. I don't exactly know how, when that subdivision was built and the HOA didn't maintain that and it was sold. I don't know the history on that, but no matter who owns that, that lot right now. And Brad is pulling up the, the plat. I believe there is language in there in regards to it being a detention facility. Yeah, so the, on the plat, it says reserved for stormwater management and water quality. And so because of the design of it, there is some low areas that have become wetlands over the years. And that would be natural for something like that to occur, but that is where all the water is supposed to go for Salem Hills.
Does it flow out of that back into the big?
I'm not exactly sure where the outlet is without looking at the stormwater plan.
Okay.
And I, I. I just have one point I think the board should be aware of and so as um, John has indicated, this is being. The concept is for it to be on a private road. So for in the village, the current ordinance would not allow for the private road. Uh, because it's not on sewer. But there is a proposed uh, amendment that's gonna be going to the plan commission. On Wednesday for some modifications to the planned unit development district, overlay district. And there's two aspects that are being looked at, being changed for it to be uh, a tool that could be utilized for the village. Uh, in, in the better situation or the benefit of the village. The one that would be effective here is for the change to allow a PUD to be utilized. When it's not on sewer and if that was changed, then. This private road would be one that could, could go forward with, but that changed the BUD would be required. So that the concept that's being presented tonight could move forward.
Thank you, Andy.
Anything else from the board? No? Do you have any questions on that from us?
So, so I, it sounds like there's some support. There's some concern over the fire access. To the site and perhaps if there's a location somewhere that would be conducive for a small park. The board would like to see that, otherwise it sounds like. There's support here.
Um. And the fire chief would need to take a look at that, right? So.
So the list that I had created before was, how do we feel about eleven lots? Lot eight, would we be able to, um, would we be up for rezoning it from R two to?
A two.
A two. And then the, uh, the PR one, which maybe just gets shifted based on the comments that you're receiving from us to a spot that works for your layout, maybe? Maybe?
We would, we would look at that if that was something that was strong, strongly desired.
Cause I could see how parks aren't going to be very practical. But it would be for other the other neighborhood, because they do that, but.
Yeah, it's the lot that we're asking them to look into.
There are impact fees for parks. Right, and all this bill, there's an impact fee of about twenty-five hundred dollars for parks. Well, my concern is still the, uh, the, the concern that our citizens have on, uh, the amount of traffic on two hundred and eighty-fourth and, uh, closeness to that one house. If they could, uh, it, because they do have access for lot eight of that, of that parcel. In front of the road or something that would go through there, it could do with that. To get to the subdivision, I think it'd be, uh, be more in favor of that.
Are, are we asking them to review, um, a, 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 a potential off of fifty?
Different access.
Yeah, he said he was going to check with them.
I'm going to check with them on that existing driveway access point. I will not be checking into a public road off highway fifty that the road, it doesn't work that way. I don't think any connection beyond a driveway is going to be financially feasible for me to proceed at this point. And so this is a feedback that I need, and I just need some open and honest feedback because I, I'm basing my pro forma based on what I did in the build of Paddock Lake. And so if there's going to be significant costs related to improving parks or connecting to highway fifty or doing other things, then that's fine, and we've got other developments elsewhere that we can focus on. Um, and we just won't proceed with this one. This is an easy one for us to do. It's a private road, private subdivision. I can get this infrastructure done in three or four months and get these houses going ASAP, so.
You know, you're starting to sound condescending.
Oh, no, no, I'm just letting you know that the, the more clear feedback I get tonight will help me with the direction.
Well, I can give you a feedback if you want it.
And that's what I'm here for.
Us to paddock lake, then take your business elsewhere.
Right, you know, my big fear is that this is a private. It's a private community with a private road coming off of another community. That just seems a little weird. I, I don't know, I, I agree, it would be nice to have it off fifty. I see what you're trying to do. I think it would be, it would be beautiful back there. That just for me living in there, that would be a weird thing for me. Oh yeah, there's this whole fat private gated to community back there.
It, it doesn't have to be gated. It does not have to be gated.
You know, this, there, there, there's a fine line here because this does check a number of the boxes of what people originally said that they want, which were large lots, right?
Yeah.
So how do we find a way somehow way to give you some movement forward that doesn't, um, upset the concept of asking us to not allow a, a subdivision to go in is, is actually not legal, right? So you can't say you can never put houses on a piece of land, but we're listening tonight to come up like with what little shapes and curves or turns can we do to find it more palatable, right? Um, I'm going to go on a limb and just say when it comes to the rezoning of a twelve acre parcel, I mean, that seems large enough for horses or something like that to me. Um, true, but maybe even what's not, you know, and, and maybe that's not large enough for that. I don't know enough to say, but on the surface, rezoning that lot to me seems reasonable, but I'm, I'm also open to education on the subject. If I'm wrong on that, like Brad, is there any like reason or, 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 um, confines that on the surface, that lot twelve would not be subject or it could be?
Could be rezoned A two.
We're going to A two, okay, um, which is agriculture. A two is the agricultural zoning, which, you know, everybody loves rural and loves farm. So that does check that box that we hear from the community. Um, so, uh, and then you talked about the C one boundary, but that has a lot to do with after you do your engineering figure out your storm location, uh, and then C is being for conservancy and conservancy would be like where trees had to stay and and, and things, maybe for everybody's education purposes, go into, you know, what is a conservancy area? Sorry to ask you to tell us, but maybe for everybody's benefit.
Well, there's going to be two back here. There's going to be a wetland conservancy, which we'd have to hire a consultant to come out and stake that lowland conservancy wetland boundary that could have changed over time. So we hire somebody to come out there, they would stake that within the, the growing season, that would have to be preserved. The, there is a, also an upland conservancy, if it's got certain characteristics, primary environmental quarter, for example. Um, that could be an area that would be deemed where there'd be limited activity or disturbance to it.
Now, and, and just because that leaves question marks, we, we say limited, like as in the original development, but once done and completed, uh, really no change, right? Like he wouldn't be able to go in and say, cut a tree down over a certain diameter. Things like that, it would have to stay protected or, or are there different?
So it, that, that depends on when we get the environmental consultant out there to determine the quality and location and whether there's certain environmental features that would dictate the, that it needs to be preserved. We, there's developments that we've done where it is considered primary environmental quarter. You're still allowed to go in and put, take the trees down necessary to construct the house, but they don't want you going and clear cutting the trees within those areas.
Got you. Okay.
Okay, so I think, um, if you and staff can work on some of those questions and then I don't know what the process is. We have another meeting, meeting in a couple of weeks. Could we put this, this back on or how, how does that work since we're?
So generally speaking, uh, all of this goes through the planning commission, not through the board, but because we're trying as a village to have better public transparency. That's why we brought this to the board in a public meeting.
Okay.
So the correct process going forward would be going through the planning commission to make sure all I, items are addressed correctly. There would be, uh, they would go through engineering review, they would do a plat, they would have public hearings and would follow the normal planning commission process after the board gives them direction tonight as to what you like and what you don't.
Okay, so I think we have that now, right?
Yeah, and I, I received.
Three of these did go for the planning meeting, uh, uh, already, and they approved, they
They gave the.
Was that they were in favor.
That's correct. All three of these went, that's right. All three of these already went through the pan, planning commission for concept review only. Bear requested that they also have a concept review with the board and village staff agreed that it was a good idea to make sure not only the planning commission liked the concepts, but also the board and that we gave ample opportunity for the public to provide public comment prior to having bear spend, uh, a lot of money on engineering.
But it'll still go back through the process of public hearing and all of that.
Correct, yes.
All right, do we have what we need on this one? We can move on to the next. All right, great. Eight point three discussion on a cons, on a conceptual development plan submitted by Bear Development on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five for a single family home development. I don't know what that is, um, preliminarily known as the Silver Lake parcels on tax parcel seven zero four one twenty zero eight three four two one four. Seven zero four one twenty zero eight three four two one two. Seven zero four one twenty zero eight three four two one zero and seven zero four one twenty zero eight three four two five five. For informational purposes only, these parcels are located on the west side of County Highway B, approximately two hundred feet north of Lakeview Drive.
Okay, so, and maybe I'll start by just clarifying, uh, somebody had brought up the trees had been removed on this property at one point in the past. Yeah, that, that was the previous owner. That was not bear. That was not us. We bought the property after that had happened. Um, we've been in front of Silver Lake and then in front of Salem over the years with different developments on this, this property. At one point it was condos and then it was a higher density housing development. And, you know, we have heard feedback over the years that, uh, they didn't want a whole lot of density on this property. Um, it is true that I, I, I did talk with Salem and my original plan was to look at five or six lots on this property because of the history. Um, but there is a need for housing, um, specifically in Silver Lake. I, I am told that the River View needs would like more kids, so they did ask me to look at it. Could I get it to pencil out with more lots and a little bit higher density? So we looked at that, we came up with a plan, which is what I've got here. Um, but I, I've been also very open about, I can go either way. I, I do believe that the, the village would benefit from additional housing. We do have a home building company that specializes in this type of lot size and product, so it'd be great for the community, it'd be great for us. But we're okay going with a different alternate plan here that would have, um, a lesser density. So again, I'm here and I, when I was here at the plan commission, I was, it was, some people were in favor of it, others were like, eh, not sure about it. So again, I'm just here looking for some honest feedback on what route would you like me to go with this property?
Can, go ahead.
I know last time you had started with this, uh, since I've been on the board, there was discussions about moving the environmental corridor. Uh, and I'm, it's nice to see that you're not going to do it this time. You're not going to touch that corridor. Uh, I am concerned with the number of homes that you're still putting up. I know it's down from your twenty-seven. But I'm still concerned with the sheer number, uh, of homes putting in there, especially given some of this, uh, flooding issues that we've had in the surrounding homes.
So the one, the one good thing about if I were to proceed with the nineteen lot subdivision would be that I would have to have this fully engineered. I would most likely have to do some mass grading of that site to get all of the water to flow to the detention pond that I have proposed at the south end, closer to Cogswell. So I do believe that could help mitigate some, some of the water concerns. If I were to go the smaller five lot subdivision route, if you want to call it a subdivision, uh, the intent there was to keep the lots primarily how they are and just allow mul, uh, houses to be built on each parcel. So I wouldn't be masquerading, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be putting in a lot of infrastructure under that option.
And what about the covert underneath, uh, Cogswell from that south lot? Uh, going over into the lake.
Okay. So the next phase would for us to, would be for us to engine, engineer this one, of course. Uh, typically what we have to do with when we size these detention ponds is to, um, treat the water and allow for the same amount of runoff that is leaving that parcel right now. So I don't recall ever looking at that covert that crosses under Cogswell in the past to see if they needed to be modified. Now, because typically we're still releasing the same amount of water, we're just creating a big basin to, to store it, treat it, and then release it at that same rate.
Yeah, looking at lots, uh, one, I think it's nine. And then lot, um, what is it? Eighteen fifteen, fifteen, I think. Um, they're unusual in their design and how they taper down. Uh, as a new homeowner, and I've said this to our staff, what bothers me is a new homeowner comes in from Chicago, from wherever, and they see this nice lot and they go ahead and they buy it and they build their home and they go to put a little shed in the back. Now it doesn't meet setbacks, so they have to seek variances. What can be done specifically with those three lots? Because when I had our staff check, they do not believe it's going to meet the setbacks for a shed.
And that was lots one?
I think it's, yeah, the first one, when you come in, lot one, as you go up, you start to make that turn and before you get to the cul-de-sac on the right, it's got that little octagon. And then directly across from that is the other one.
And, and actually I think there's one, one more, you said fifteen, but then I think also sixteen, which is like a radius front there on the, uh, left, if you're driving into subdivision, that one may very well also have difficulty getting any kind of a.
Sure.
And while it's trivial, okay, I don't think, and you yourself said a minute ago, we need homes, we need houses. Um, I don't think it's trivial, and I want to say you said that. Uh, for a new homeowner to buy a home, because what is your average price you're going to be looking at for these, just these nineteen lots?
They're going to range, um, my hope is that we'd be in the upper four hundreds, four sixty to four eighty and plus.
The whole enchilada.
Yeah, i- if we were to build, uh, what we call a move-in ready or a spec home, it'd be probably in that four sixty to four eighty range for a.
So you spent four hundred thousand dollars on a home, beautiful home, beautiful lot. And you go to put that shed so you can store your lawnmower, your kid's bikes and lo and behold, you gotta come before us again just to get that variance to put it in.
Sure. Yeah, I know, I know that's a problem with a lot of the smaller fifty or even forty foot lots, because a lot of these subdivisions were created back in the twenties and thirties. I just shoehorned them in. They were cottages, right? They were meant to be cottage seasonal type homes. A lot of those lots, because they are so small, do have those issues. I mean, we have to be fully transparent with what the setbacks are and what they are allowed and not allowed to build. So that's, that's going to be in our disclaimers. It's on the plat of what the setbacks are. They will need to make an educated decision whether or not they want to buy that lot, whether it's, it's only supported ten by twelve shed or if they want something larger. But we're also going to have a, an HOA that controls the covenants and enforces it back here as well, if we were to proceed with this one, that would dictate the sizes and the aesthetics of that stuff. But typically, I'm sure Brad and Andy could speak to this, but um, is only, uh, variance is only, can only be granted if it's hardship and it can't be created hardship. So they wouldn't have any position to request a variance in something like this.
So I'm going to jump in here, Bill. I'm wondering if, um, one of the answers here might be, so you're looking for feedback? Where maybe you delete a number of lots.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
And then.
Take those three out.
With, with looking at, uh, the concept of them all being able to do some kind of an outbuilding that lowers the overall number, increases the lot size maybe a little bit, um, in some cases. And, uh, and then instead of depending on somebody to read all the black and white, because like they bought the house, but then they think of the shed later and they, I, I didn't catch that. I didn't think to ask the real estate agent. I didn't ask my agent. Um, and now they're in that home, maybe this is the part where we get to jump in and say, hey, can you make sure that each lot's accommodated for for, for, for that? And when I look at this drawing, I know it's conceptual, but some of these do look pretty tight.
Yep. And I can tell you, I fell into that category of, we found a home. My wife said, this is it. We bought it. I never read the papers in detail, other than the mortgage that I was signing off on.
Got it.
Okay, so it's going to happen.
But being part of, I get the HOA part, having lived in one for many years and I don't live in one anymore for that reason. Cause it's very tricky, but you do disclose all that stuff. So that makes sense to me. Is this going to, this isn't a gated, this is a public road here?
This would be a public road.
And you're not asking the.
Correct. The only thing that we're asking for on this would be it is zoned, uh, somebody mentioned earlier, it's zoned R four and R three. We would be looking at rezoning it to be a little bit higher density, smaller lots in order to accommodate some of that. And again, that was because, you know, for me to build a public road, it is costly, so I have to be able to get a certain number of lots to help pay for that public road. So what's on the screen is financially feasible for me.
So Jonah, that begs the question, why do you go out and you find these lots that are zoned R two, R three? You buy them and then you sit on them. And this particular area, this is going to be your fourth shot at it since the days of Silver Lake and Salem Lake. Uh, and it seems like at times that you come up when there's a change in the board on the hopes that you'll get a, a favorable.
Sure.
Outcome. Why do you buy areas that are zoned R three and then turn around and come to us and say, we want R five?
So I'm, I'm here tonight because I was encouraged by staff to just look at it because perhaps the board would want to see some housing, perhaps the school needs some additional kids. So, um, I, I am.
I'll be honest, and I know I'm, I'm not going to be happy with some of you. Um, I live right around the corner from this. I would like to see some sort of development, some homes, but I personally still don't like what you're putting in there. And again, I say that from the standpoint, you knew it was R three, you bought it, and now you want to come to us and rezone of R five. Well, I, I do think these are fairly close together. I'm too close for that. The number is, in my opinion, way too high. I mean, you, some of your side yard, what do you got, eight foot is a minimum? And your R six, what were you after?
Yeah, they are, they, they are eight foot minimums for the R, R six zoning district.
That's ridiculous.
Different than the other neighborhood. You look at the general map, they're close together.
Yeah, but as he explained, some of these homes were way back. Okay, they weren't meant for year-round uh living, they were summer cottages. But as the area developed, because people saw an interest in it, like myself, um, and we bought and yeah, it's not gonna be the same as what's in the area. But we also don't, in my opinion anyhow, we don't wanna put them in there where they look like, uh, what do they call them down in Chicago, the uh?
Row houses?
Row houses, yep.
Yeah.
So I guess uh, for, for me, if, if you were to diligently look at every single lot, making sure that it had accommodations uh with, because like you said, you could not get a variance for a shed because it requires a hardship. And hardship isn't, I want a shed and I have a lot of stuff to store, it, it's not an intuitive definition. So um, if you were to be able to lay this out where people could have their outbuildings and have a little bit more space, and I completely heard you about, you need to sell a certain number of lots to qualify for the, the road, the public road that you'd have to put in. And I, I get that, but taking a really close look at that and seeing what you could do with that.
Sure, the only other piece of this is I've got secondary piece off of Dells in the back. We could flip, so, and one other point of clarification, the, the large P E C lot along Cogswell, that was completely excluded from this. This is gonna be one building site, we're not trying to develop anything on that parcel. But I do have some property off of Dells just to the top of the screen here, if we could flip to that. I wanted to try to look at these independently. I've got the traditional platted subdivision here, which is the nineteen lots. I wanted to see if we can get three more lots along Dells. There's currently five lots here right now. I've got the large lot off of Cogswell. And then I've got four more. I'd like to see if I can just do a lot line adjustment and create these three lots off of Dells that would be completely independent from that plat. And only have to plat the single-family subdivision in the center. So I, I do need some feedback on whether you would support this as being independent from the nineteen lots. And whether it's a C S M or whether it's a lot line adjustment, getting these three lots off of Dells with limited disturbance to them.
And I, I personally am in favor of that. I was at the meeting, meeting when that came up. And originally, when this was twenty seven lots here, the vote was gonna go off into that little quiet area that he's talking about. So I do think that's the uh, the best uh choice to divide those three lots by themselves.
So what you have on the screen is what you'd want to end up with, or you'd want to turn that into something else?
That's what I'd like to end up with.
So you just wanna have two regular lots with an oversized lot?
Yeah. And the reason I've got the oversized lot there is because
Yeah, commercial.
There is a path that starts probably thirty or forty, uh, maybe fifty feet into that larger parcel. And so the pavement goes up to that point and then stops. So I have to be able to get a driveway and right before, before that path starts. And so that's why I've got this long parcel, but I thought it would be kind of nice to, and it'd be a, a nice buffer. Yeah, I wanted to keep the trees, because it, it is a very nice path that gets a lot of traffic, and I didn't want to have to clear cut all that. So I'd like to try to keep those, those lots for the most part in their natural form, um, and not have to clear cut them, just put three sewer laterals into them and allow the homeowners to construct their, their homes.
I would also encourage you, you start to do any engineering, because I would be okay with that, but when you start to do engineering, take a hard look at uh some of the concerns that came up tonight about homes surrounding that area to the south west, without flooding.
Yeah.
Right, so if we, if we did proceed with the denser subdivision within the center, I would most likely have to remove a very decent amount of, of trees within that section in order to grade it properly, so we can catch that runoff, we can catch it, whether it's in a ditch that runs along that lot boundary. Well, I, I don't know if we'd pipe it or if we could just do a ditch, right? Yeah, so that, that would be part of that, that exercise that we would go through.
In the nineteen lot one, that one seems like an ideal place to have a park.
Yep.
Like maybe lot six, that sixteen, right there in the center, but then lot one and nineteen seem really close to the other houses, so maybe lot one and two could be combined and the house would be further away, because that is I would be really upset.
Yeah, I would.
I would be really upset if I had a house
Yeah.
on top of my house like that.
And, and I would be okay with one and two being combined. I think that fifteen and sixteen, you need to look at those, and maybe we take and just make those, you know, seventeen and eighteen, just make those two, I don't know. I would also like to see a park in here. Um, and then number nine, maybe split that with ten and eight, so you're just taking that out. But I don't know, you'd have to work your numbers out and see, but that's what I would be okay with.
So what is your minimum number of homes is what you gotta go back and figure out?
When I originally ran this, what's on the screen is what we could live with, that, that's, they asked me to take a look at it, so it's.
What happened to your five homes?
So that's no infrastructure. So, and I, I wouldn't mind talking about that tonight, if I can get some feedback on that, if we just scrap this whole idea.
Just for five homes?
Right, yeah.
But the, the difference, now don't get me wrong, I'm not in favor of either one, one way or the other, but just for clarity for our discussion. The difference is if you do the nineteen, you're doing mass grading, you're catching the water, you're directing it to a detention, detention pond. Um, if we go with the five lots, you're going on natural and it, it doesn't.
We still have to do something to water, you, you have to contain your water.
But, but it's, but it comes a different animal.
Yeah, so that, so to be clear, there are five lots here right now on this collective property. I was originally asking, can I just realign these lot boundaries to make the parcels a little bit more functional, because they're kind of goofy shapes? And so there, I can get building permits on the majority of these right now, but I wanted to make them more functional. Uh, so that's where the original plan started. I would not be putting infrastructure in, I probably have to install a sewer lateral to the lots. But there wouldn't be any need to go do any mass grading, I, it wouldn't pencil out for me for five lots. So that would be the trade-off, if I'm looking at the five, or actually, it was gonna be a six lot s- development, because if you go back to the other slide, the two little guys there, I think that says lot one and two. That's one parcel right now that's zoned R four. That, that's conducive for a, for two lots. I could come in and request approval of a C S M to split that one parcel into two, if you guys would support it. That's where number six comes in, if you were to support that one being split in the middle.
So come back to the bigger one again. I guess I could get on board without any major infrastructure, except somehow along that western edge where the existing homes are not there. Uh, up trying to correct any of the flooding that's taking place and allowing five homes, six homes without major grading or anything of that nature.
Where would your um? So if you put these homes in, where would the driveways be? Yeah, yeah, if you went the fires, you know, the five.
So we have.
For, for five lots?
We have frontage right here. And see the other side, oh, those will be, those will be driveways at that point. There'd be one driveway where that pond is to a larger lot, one driveway to uh, I think I've got five acres in the center there. And then I'm still having three parcels off of Dells. Yeah, so I've got three, yep, I've got five acre in the center, I've got a two acre. Then go back to the home. This would be a two acre right there, and we've got our original.
I, I could get on board with you doing that and somehow or other, no grading, except to try and uh relieve some of that flooding that's taking place along that western edge.
Do we know where the flooding is? I, I'm actually not aware of the flooding, so do we know where that's at? All the way at the end of the cul-de-sac?
So that we need to keep this as a, and this is not a public hearing or back and forth, um, we can get you those answers.
I think I got the gist of it there.
I guess, what did the plan commission say about this?
The planning commission overall um was in favor of the proposal because it was smaller and less lots than the original proposal that was brought forth uh under a week ago.
Okay.
And just to give a little bit more context, I think it would be helpful. The village participates in the Kenosha County Housing Task Force, Andy can speak to some of that as well. But the Kenosha County Housing Task Force has identified over the last five years that it, there is a critical housing shortage in Kenosha County. The schools have also talked about how there is dec- declining birth rates and declining school enrollments, which is part of the reasons why it's not necessarily because they want to ask for more money, it's because every less student that you have is less money that the schools are receiving. So the schools have talked about wanting additional students to be able to enter. Previously, families would have three, four, or five children, now a lot of families having, are having one or two. So the schools have asked, is there a way to increase housing? The Kenosha County Housing Task Force has talked about the housing shortage, and KABA has also talked about the housing shortage. And so when we originally met with Bear, there was the discussion of would we want to do five houses, twenty seven houses, or something in between? The village had talked to Bear about wanting to see what is the, the minimum number of lots you could put in here that isn't five, that could still pencil out, that could address a number of the concerns that we're hearing through the task force, through KABA, and through the schools. The minimum number of houses is what you have on your screen that they could still build and afford the infrastructure and would address some of the critical shortages and needs that we are hearing in the community. Another piece that the village staff considered in this development is that this is considered infill development. The infrastructure already exists as far as having the sewer laterals and sewer mains there, as well as roadways. Infill development is the cheapest type of development to do for your long-term future. New subdivisions that are not connected to anything else and are out in the middle of farm fields do not pencil out as well as infill like this. So if you're looking for the return on investment long-term for a village, this is what would pencil out for being something that would be cost benefit, but also would address, again, those critical needs that we've been hearing. Staff doesn't have a preference one way or the other, we don't really care if you do five lots, if you do nineteen lots, if you do twenty seven lots. Our job is to hear all proposals that come across our desks and to help try to bring things forward. We did have a member of the E D C that did participate in some of the pre-meetings on this and helped to kind of look at big picture concepts and scenarios. Again, our, our goal is just to bring concepts forward for you to consider. And we did hear from the previous um development proposal that Bear had brought forward. The village did not like the twenty seven lots that I think was originally proposed, so this is less. So that's a little bit of the background that I think is helpful. Uh, the planning commission did hear this, the planning commission was overall in favor of what is on your screen before you this evening.
So Jonah, if you were to go to less homes, um, say six, seven, what do you think your asking price for the lot and home would be? So we're gonna minimize the number of infrastructure. Uh, again, focusing on uh trying to address some of the water runoff causing the floods potentially. No grading on your part, what do you think your, your asking price is gonna go at? Because you had four hundred thousand on nineteen.
Yeah, so I, I would most, I wouldn't be building on these larger parcels, the two and a half to five acres, I would just be putting those up for sale to the general public so they could buy that lot and build their own house on it. But based on what we've seen on similar size lots, um, you know, most likely they're gonna, it's not cheap to build these days. So I could easily see those houses being in the six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar range, for sure. Um, two to five acres.
Yeah.
Um, the two smaller ones, if I were to construct those, that is more of a lot product that we would typically build with Bear Homes. Those would probably be in that four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy thousand dollar range.
So I had a question. You, you want to go nineteen because of the infrastructure you have to put in? Is there a hybrid concept here where you're between the six and seven and the nineteen and you a- and you were to do an HOA and not have a public road and so, something like in between? And I don't know if we can even do that with, with the way things are, uh, with the codes are and such.
Yeah, Peter, I'm not sure if that would work, um. The reason I can get it to work on those much larger, more expensive parcels is because that demographic doesn't have a problem paying for and upkeeping for that road. If I'm trying to sell a house for five hundred thousand, they're gonna, they're not gonna be as receptive to, wait a second, that's my road that I have to pay for to patch it and pave it and snowplow it, so I don't know if the, the private road option would work here.
Okay, so in an effort to move this along, because we still have a long agenda and a close session. Um, I'm just going to ask for final thoughts to give to Jonah here so that we can go to the next.
Larger lots, fewer homes, uh, addressing the uh water issues along the west side, limited uh grading on your behalf.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Along with that, and it only adds five homes, only add five more boats on Saddle Lake.
I'm in favor too of the, the less houses. I think it'll help the neighbors in the back and the water problem, there's less water runoff with larger lots.
But he said he was gonna solve the water problem.
If, if he goes with the nineteen.
Yeah, I like, I like this, I like it fits in with the whole community, like how it is, there's a couple of lots I don't like, and then I feel like in that bottom corner of Lakeview, that would be a perfect spot for a park. I really think we need a park in here, but I like how it is, minus lot one especially.
Now, when we're talking a park, we're telling you, you get a kiddie park.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, a kid park.
Got it.
On playground.
Private park.
No. No, it can't be private, this would be for everybody.
Yeah. So my feelings on it, Jonah, um, I don't like the three lots, as Bill said, just for the uh, you know, not being able to put up a shed. I would like to see a park. Um, I know that our schools have been doing um outreach that they do need students, the only way to bring students, especially in the Wilmot School District, which there's not a whole lot of area to build new homes in the Wilmot School District, to be honest with you. So I would be in favor of this if we could put in a park and we can fix those odd shaped lots that we can have, um, meet the setback requirements.
Okay.
Maybe that could be done with, I know you kept some straight lot lines, maybe you have some changes, and, and maybe that's not allowed, but you want some feedback, so maybe you could accomplish that.
That's, that's good feedback, I'll take both options back, the five or six slots, and we'll look at this one public road option a little closer as well, and see what we can get to work on our side and take it from there.
Okay, right, we'll move on to eight point four, discussion on a conceptual development plan submitted by Bear Development on May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five for a mixed unit development primarily, preliminarily known as the State Highway eighty-three parcels on tax parcel seven zero four one twenty one oh four zero four zero one. For informational purposes only, these parcels are located on the west side of State Highway eighty-three at the intersection with Falcon Way.
Hello, S R Mills, forty eleven, uh, forty fifteen Eightieth Street, Kenosha. It's like I got the easy one, everyone's leaving after Jonah here. I appreciate the time and consideration. Uh, again, as Jonah had mentioned on some of the previous uh projects, really just looking for some feedback. We've received feedback from the plant commission, uh, but knowing that they're not necessarily the final vote, it's this body, we wanted to make sure that uh in general, we're going in the right direction and, and it's something that uh the village of Salem Lakes would like to see. So uh, the subject parcel is on the, the lower half of the screen here, it's thirty-four acres. As a combination, it's a three point seven acre commercial lot. There we go. Forty-six single-family lots, average about ten thousand square feet. And thirty-four duplex townhomes, so sixty-eight homes together, but thirty-four duplex townhomes. Um, we've uh, uh, feel good about the marketplace uh with what happened just to the west over at Whitetail Ridge, we're uh sold out of those or will be sold out of those here shortly, uh, you know, the price point for the
Uh, you know, the price point for the, uh, lot house combos, low fives to mid fives. Uh, we built all of those ourselves. And it's, it's gone, is better than expected, especially given this current market. You know, there's been some discussions, particularly on Falcon Way with how we handle that. You know, we would work with the DOT as to whether or not it would be a lighted intersection around about, that's kind of out our, out of our control though. It's a DOT discussion and then also a potential through road through the site to, um, uh, to F. It's a little difficult because we don't actually, we're not able to connect right through a village of Salem Lakes piece. What we did do on the plan, uh, is we do have a life safety entrance, which is a, it'd be dedicated for fire trucks and for ambulances. That if there is an issue within any component of the subdivision, that that life safety access would be accessible and be able to traverse through that. Uh, one of the, the major reasons too, that we think that the, uh, the connection going through to F is, is a little dicey is. One, it does trigger some additional costs on F and 50 with some roadway improvements, but really more so it's a, it's a safety issue. That curve, that road is not the easiest to access. Uh, my son's a senior over at Central. I know he's a terrible driver and. I could see everybody cutting through there, going west. Uh, it's over to Silver Lake Park or what have you. You know, back in the day, this was shown more for, uh, a commercial industrial use. Obviously here we're looking to go to more of a residential use with that residential use, I think changes some of the traffic patterns there to where you might want, not want to have a cut through. In your front yard with your kids playing and things like that. So just part of the consideration there for the discussion points tonight. From an economic standpoint, as it was mentioned, we would look for some TIF assistance on this one. Uh, this is, is John Cameron, who is from Ellers here, mentioned earlier. This, it doesn't pencil from the economic side. Uh, it's a situation that, you know, we would need some TIF. Typically how we've handled that in other communities from, um, Burlington to Union Grove, Bristol. Is we, we look for an internal rate of return. So we go back and size the deal based on a, a yield, a percentage yields that says, okay, this is how much. And once we get to this yield from the TIF assistance, then that TIF turns off. And so it provides some protections that we're not making too much. It's not unjust in Richmond on our side. Same point, we've got some safeguards in there that if we do in fact create the tax base that we think we're going to create, that we can at least make a decent yield on the deal.
Okay. These are all going to be owner occupied?
Uh, correct. Yeah. We, we always can't, I mean, two sales down the road, we can't control that, but our intention is to sell them all owner occupied.
Correct. And you're not looking for any, um. Low income.
No, this is, this is all.
Market rate.
Yeah, I think this is a continuation of, you know, their price points for the houses are probably five and a quarter.
Yeah.
Maybe a little higher. The side-by-side townhomes, 330 to 350 aside, probably at the low end, you know, those tend to creep up. So the, the townhomes are likely 1800 to 1900 square feet, three bedroom, two bath, two and a half bath.
And the townhomes are the ones that are to the right on this.
That's correct. Yep.
And would you have like a tree line or something in between the townhouses and the stormwater?
We would.
Okay.
Yeah, we.
And what kind of commercial are you looking to put in there?
I'm not sure yet. You know, it's a 3.7 acre lot, so we've got some flexibility with that. Uh, you know, we think given that it's a hard corner, that some kind of retail user, uh, you know, we still have some commercial outlets further north. But I, you know, I think this would be viable for something. Um, I think the 3.7 acres is probably sized about right where you, whether it's a, uh, standalone. Fast, you know, restaurant type user or a small retail center, you could do something in there that would be meaningful.
Oh, um, out of curiosity, wh- where is the but if come in? Cause I remember 35%. And I'm looking at a three acre commercial outlaw and, and just visually, I don't see 35% there. So how does that pan out?
Good, good question. And I actually talked to, uh, elders and staff about this about a month ago when we met. So what we would look to do, and there's a. There's a lot of, uh, ways to create a, a TIF district that could work. So essentially one of the ways it's a possibility. Is this roughly 35 acre site would be, could be included. And then as you go further south, there's additional 46.6 acres that's business industrial. And then you have, uh, 61 acres that currently the school district owns. Actually, I sketched it something together here a while ago, just to make sure all of the math worked. But it, it can be done, can make sense, be well within the, uh, confines and TIF, TIF law.
But, but not this piece we're talking about tonight by itself.
Not by itself. It would have to be part of a, a larger component, which right now it's, um, it's all vacant, vacant land with different land uses. So it would blend, it would hit, what's that?
You don't own it.
We don't own it. No. And typically, I mean, most, um, uh, landowners, if you get put in the tid, it's not a negative. You know, so I mean, that's something certainly I don't want to speak to them and we haven't spoke to them yet. Again, these are just ideas on how you could get it to work. Again, a lot of the examples that we talked about, Union Grove, Mount Pleasant, Bristol, Burlington, we're all part of larger TIF deals that included. Other lands, whether they're industrial or, uh, institutional, like a school to be, be able to get all of the pieces to work.
How come there's no parking?
No what?
With all them people.
Yeah. I mean, that's something we can, again, this is pretty conceptual. I mean, we can certainly look at.
That's a lot of people.
Yeah.
That's a hundred and 114 home sites.
We made a right decision to, to, to. Paddock Lakeside that they've included a park, but I didn't, uh, there was no follow-up on that. So if we had a park, it most certainly would be used by both of those developments that they have.
Yeah. And I think it's, you know, as we think about park too, it's different from like a tot lot, which I think would be more appropriate here. You've got a lot of, you know, if you've got a great park, the school district, all of that land for ball fields and things like that to the east. But certainly I think a tot lot of sorts would be appropriate here and we can choreograph that and get that to fit thought and issue.
I was hoping you made your last presentation. What was the estimated assessed value of this?
But 40, we have 47, best guess, 47.8 million. Yeah.
And you have to have a TIF on this in order to make it work?
This one does. Yeah. It just, it, it loses money on the front end. So it really goes back to, does it make economic sense for the village? You know, we did do a bit of a study to look at the, uh, the impact fees, you know, overall, uh, you know, outside of the property tax side, where would it balance out? And it's approximately, uh, 1.15 million between hookup fees and rezoned fees, et cetera. So it's, it's pretty sizable just from a fee standpoint, in addition to the property tax. And again, there are safeguards in here that, you know, once we hit a certain level of return that we all agree upon within the development agreement. Got a lot of smart people at Ellers that are checking the math to make sure things balance out. Then that turns off and it goes back to the traditional taxing districts.
So with what you just said, to say it a different way, instead of the 20-year window, it, it, it's possible it could be a shorter window.
Yeah. And you can think about it two different ways. You can do it over the full 20-year window and then have it shut off early. Or you can do a split. Often what we've done is say, okay, well here's where we think we're going to be. Maybe we need it the full 20, but it's not, we get a hundred percent of it. It's a 8515, or there's some other hurdle rates in there. So there's some different ways to structure it based on, you know, what the municipality wants and what works best for everybody. And, and again, and it's, you know, we're banking it upfront, you know, if, I think there was a question earlier, what happens if the development doesn't get completed? Oftentimes you're going to have letters of credit and bonds. So you'll be able to make sure it gets completed. But certainly 2008, you know, wasn't that long ago. It's all in our memories where maybe things don't go right. Maybe the sales don't happen. We're not looking for any, uh, municipal bonding. We wouldn't go back to the municipality to, they'll just say on lakes and say, hey, we want you to. Use bonds to go make this happen and then guarantees back. We would just do that on our own nickel and, you know, if it doesn't work, it's on us.
And so. Go through a tip district with paddock lake?
What's that?
There's no commercial. They, they don't have any commercial on their end, on their side.
Okay.
It's all residential. So when are you planning to start the paddock lakeside?
Uh, I'm not sure yet. I think we're trying to figure out, you know, between the two sides, how does everything coexist and does it, does it work? So we're hopeful that we can push them both forward, uh, with exactly what would happen first and second, I'm not entirely sure, but.
Do you plan on putting septic on their site or?
No, I mean, we would look to, you know, we're hopeful that there would be some kind of agreement, um, that, you know, getting us a little bit out of our, you know, um, purvey. But we're, we're hopeful we can get to these next steps. We could find some agreement that works for water and sewer.
SR.
Yeah.
Is it true that, uh, paddock lakeside is also using TIF in order to make this happen?
They, they are. Yeah. So.
How are, how are they?
Cause it, so that's part of an existing TIF district that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So they included, um, uh, the, the Culvers Quick Trip and looped it around for some other areas. So they, that was probably four or five years old now.
And I guess my next question would be, is the improvements on 83, who would be responsible for that?
I mean, we would be responsible at the end of the day. So, I mean, everything comes out and balances from, from us to be able to put it in. And again, we're bringing it back to a, uh, you know, internal rate of return. So same way that there's, uh, a lot of extra roadway going to the north on the paddock lakeside. You know, that's still on us too. And then we would strike our own independent TIF deals that makes sense for, you know, for you guys, for us to make sure the deal's successful.
You had, you had mentioned, um, water and sewer. It was my understanding that, uh, the Salem lakeside was going to be all well.
We're, we're okay with that on the well side. I mean, if there was some kind of water deal struck, that we'd be happy to participate and, and, uh, have municipal water. But we're okay doing, uh, the wells too, on the village of Salem Lake side.
Personally, I would like to not see wells in such density, but that's just me as well as the price point you're talking about. People having to deal with wells or, uh, a localized well and then its own little water system.
Yeah.
That's just a comment to give you like, that's not exciting to me at all. Um, and then separately, if I'm hearing you correct, like this is so conceptual that if you can't land the deal with the other surrounding properties. You don't need a TIF because you, you, you can't get your hands on them and you can't do the commercial portion. It doesn't flow.
Well, and we would need to, we would not need to acquire those other properties. It's just from a municipal. Decision about, do you want to include them in the TIF district? So typically there's a multitude of different property owners in TIF districts. And, uh, John can better explain it than I can, but it, we, we don't have to be the sole, uh, owner of that land. So it's just whether you as a, as a municipal body, want to create this TIF district that would expand over certain areas that's at your purvey.
Okay. How do you guarantee it's going to be only 35% residential in a TIF district?
It, it's really goes back to what is it planned for today? You know, we've seen things change over time. Certainly state law and TIFs change over time. Uh, yeah, right now, again, and there's a hundred different ways you could draw a map up to get it to work. One of the easiest ways that we saw is just take all the vacant land that goes south includes quite a bit of land that, uh, Salem grade school owns. So, you know, it's, so the assessed valuation is, is nil anyhow. Yeah, this is, it is.
I don't know.
This is.
So that's where your road to the south that kind of ends, you would connect in there.
Yeah.
And then would you have another entrance on 83?
For, I mean, we have the entrance on 83 by Falcon Way. And then we're showing a northern entryway to go up into the paddock lake piece and an additional southern access point that would go down. It would deadhead until something happens down there.
So right, but when you, if you were to do that, would you put another entrance on 83?
If we were to do the TID district?
The southern part.
Well, this, the southern part, we don't own that. We're not, we're not showing anything on there.
So are you going to have that road just stop right there?
It would. Yeah. It would. It would just stub down there for at some point when there's a different use. Or they develop, then they'd have access to that road. Typically that's what we're asked to do is to deadhead a road down and we're happy to not do it if that you don't.
That makes sense, Cassandra.
Speaking in all developments, it is a good idea to have interconnectivity between developments. So on this one, it would show a connection to the south as well as a connection out to the west. It is a good idea. When you look at best practices in neighborhood planning and community development, connection points are good. Dead ends are not.
I think it's a little bit like the first deal that we looked at up in Salem Hills where it's that outlaw road, same general idea, except here we would actually stub it down. Or you could leave it not stubbed and just show it as grass and an outlaw, but same general idea.
If the tip were not to materialize, should you still make the work?
Can't unfortunately.
Increase the size of the lots?
Now, it, 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 you know, these lots are at 10,000 square feet. They're pretty efficient. You know, they're, you know, kind of a sweet spot where, you know, back in the day, we, we'd always be asked for 18, 20,000 square foot lots, which are very wide, not as economical. These are pretty economical. It's just tight. I mean, it, it goes in and it loses seven figures of money as it sits right now. And again, all that gets, it's not us saying it in a vacuum. It gets vetted by elders and there's a lot of comps out there. Unfortunately, it just doesn't, it just doesn't pencil.
For the board to consider here on some other things, I just want this informational is in regards to the, the duplex area. So right now I think the concept is for it to be a condo. Right. And part of the discussions we had is, um, is it possible for it to be non-condo and owner, owner occupied? And, and it would be, but currently the village ordinance that wouldn't allow that, that would require a zero lot line setback. The village is looking to go forward, you know, with a, um, well, RFP right now for the zoning ordinance to be looked at. That would be one area that maybe that might be something for the village to come up with a different zoning district that would allow that. We're not saying that that should happen here. I just wanted to point out that here is something that's coming before the board. Where a different zoning district could allow for a different type of homeownership that wouldn't be a condo. Condo is one type of ownership, but having a duplex style ownership where it's a zero lot line is a different type of, uh, ownership. For a lot that we're seeing, uh, is something that would be needed through the housing task force. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage for that thought process. That type of development could also occur with the PUD. So the PUD again is being presented on Wednesday. And so this would be one area where because the ordinance doesn't exist. Is if to keep this development going forward, if the village liked that style of ownership, a PUD could be done to eliminate that, that lot line issue. So, uh, just again, wanted to present facts to the board. So you can have those things in your mind going forward with this. And just with other developments similar to this with the zoning ordinance.
Type of ownership, is it easier to finance?
It is. And that's, I could add some color commentary to that. Typically we've always done condominiums in state of Wisconsin and where it's, you have a condo association. It has gotten more complicated. It's got very litigious with different things, but so what they've done is, uh, we have a, a development in Mount Pleasant right now. That this is the first time we've ran into it and we, we really liked it because it makes the financing a lot easier where it's a zero lot line. Everybody owns basically their side. You have a, an agreement with your, you know, with your neighbor as to how you would upkeep the home and so on and so forth. But it, um, it mitigates a lot of the financing issues where it's just easier. Uh, they actually do quite a bit of it in Illinois where they bypass some of the condo, uh, condominium law that we have up here and, and it works easier. So we're okay either way. It's nice to have flexibility. We have a good experience with it in Mount Pleasant. So.
It's easy for the customer.
It's easier for the homeowner to finance. Yeah. They're going to get a cheaper rate.
So they'd be two separate each week.
Correct. Yeah.
All right. So, um, I guess we need to decide if we are in favor of what is this, I guess, um. What is the next step if we say that we are in, you know, maybe okay with entertaining, um, a TIF?
Yeah. I think from, from our standpoint, much like what Jonah said earlier, just looking for feedback. If, if it's a hard no, that's fine. If it's something that you want to entertain, knowing generally kind of the confines of what we're talking about. Uh, with something similar to this, again, not that it can't change with, include some parks and different things. I just want that feedback as we would gear up and start spending, you know, dollars, real dollars in time to take it to the next stage. We'd start working with elders, uh, to get all of that information in front of you.
All right. So I'm going to ask the board for their thoughts on that. So we can keep moving along.
Sure. I just jumped in there. You mentioned like with 1.5 million on your upfront costs, uh, earlier in your discussion regarding like what it costs to get, uh, the. Permits and, and.
Oh yeah. So that 1.15, um, that's, so those are the, and I can leave you guys this too. This is a, uh, a best guess based on a. 1500 square foot house with a garage. What permit fees would be paid back to the village? So that was over the, as it gets built out, there'd be roughly, they're just, uh, you know, 1.15 again, we'll go back in fees and it's sewer hookup fees, things like that.
So before, before you go and spend that money with elders to do the work, do you, have you guys done the pencil to paper?
Oh, yeah.
In regards to what that gap is between.
Yeah, we have that.
Doesn't work. Like maybe the next step would be to share what that is. So we know what we're getting into.
That's what I'm talking about. And I guess my next question too, is if we say no to the TIF, this dies. What does that do to paddock lake?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah, honestly.
Right now they are.
Till December 20th, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, if, if there's some agreement made, then, you know, we could look at continuing there, but that's, you know.
We, we made the decision not to extend that agreement. So go through December 20th, I think of 26.
That's correct. Your sewer service area. That's correct. Your sewer service area agreement ends December twentieth of twenty twenty-six with paddock lake. So next steps for this, this evening would be if the board overall is in favor of the concept and is not completely opposed to TIF, but would be willing to entertain the conversation. You would then send this to Bear. So, uh, or I mean to elders. Bear has already done their basic pencil of what they think they would need in TIF. Now elders would take a look at that and sharpen the pencil, so to speak, and either agree or disagree or tell what the difference would be. Um, I, it's very rare that they're a hundred percent in alignment. So I do anticipate some differences of opinion between what Bear thinks and what elders thinks. Elers is the one you would go with at the end of the day. You would go with what they're.
And Bear absorbs that cost?
Yeah, we, yeah, we would take up the cost. So we pay elders, have a, an agreement with the village and and in, in the beginning, it's, it's financial analysis. It's not all that complicated.
Right.
We've done a handful of deals with them. They're very good at what they do and.
I mean, I guess for me, I would be, um, in favor of seeing what that looks like so that we can make a better decision, but I would like to see a park here.
Top.
A top lot. I would like to see one on the paddock lakeside too.
Top. Pretty good size.
But, um.
Would, would that be a park that the village would want? Or do you want it to be maintained by the homeowners association?
I think the homeowners.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd still like to see that road go through though.
The one to the west?
Yeah, the one from eighty-three all the way over there. You're putting all this traffic out on eighty-three that's already congested.
Yeah.
And everybody just says it's going to be a shortcut from here to there or whatever. But I mean, this is, this is infrastructure. This is build out. So it's going to be a madhouse on eighty-three. These two, two. It's going to be a madhouse as they try to go more through the paddock lake subdivision and get out at that light. I mean, just a whole eight, a whole eighty-three route.
Well.
So, so I think it's important to note that they don't have the ability to put that through because that's not part of the parcels that they're looking at. Like we could say, we want that. But there's that little triangle piece that you can't put it through.
Yeah.
In this current design.
And you'd have to do major improvements on.
There would be, yeah. And but truly it, you know, just with the actus there at one, it's, it's a possible for us to sneak it out on the, the Salem side, but then there isn't a really good spot on that cur- curve. It if you go down and drive that, it's a little dicey. And so.
Yeah. So I'm actually okay with not putting a through road in only because my whole point with that was to have a second access. In case of an emergency, uh, you know, if highway eighty-three were to be shut down and you do have the fire access lane, um, it is on the paddock lakeside, but you do have that. So if there was uh, for any reason, an emergency on eighty-three, people could use that to get out onto F if they needed to. This is, but I still go back to, I think that all of the traffic is going to come on our side on eighty-three. No one's, if you've ever sat a quick trip and watched, they are not going to use that road unless they live right there. So all of that maintenance is going to be on us for all of paddock lake's side. I would like to see an agreement made where that road is split in half. We do a lot line adjustment and we do an agreement that we both take care of that road.
All I could do is try.
I go for that guarantee again of the, uh, if we run into two thousand eight and it's, uh, fifteen years down the road or twenty years and it hasn't, uh, matured.
Yeah. Yeah. So what, what that.
Spires or you're saying we don't have to get a bond or anything or raise our taxes to.
Correct. The, the only thing you would be giving up is, uh, the potential for future tax increment. So if, if that tax increment, uh, if the, if the development doesn't happen, tax increment is zero. So some component of that tax increment, the way we're doing it, we're putting the upfront money, whether we borrow it from a bank or it's equity that goes into it or partners. And then in turn, over time, the tax is generated on just the product we create. So for instance, if we talk about other areas in the TID district, that increment that gets created will not go back to support our, our deal, our development agreement. So ours is isolated from the standpoint that if, if we create the assessed valuation, if we create that increment, then it will pay us back. If we don't, it's not on the village. You guys have it bonded for it. You don't have any of the guarantees. It's all back on us.
Where, where would you sit if we did that pay as you go plan?
What's that?
If, if, if we were entirely pay as you go, not the eighty-five fifteen you were saying earlier, if, if we were interested to say, you know, it pays you go.
It, it would, even the eighty-five fifteen could be pay as you go. And again, whether it's eighty-five fifteen, it, you know, it's all going to go back to how big is that gap and where do we need to fill it? Um, it, for instance, in Mount Pleasant, we just did a deal. It was ninety-five percent. And then it went to, uh, there's a certain hurdle rate, then it shut off. We think we'll hit that hurdle rate year twelve, year fifteen. Other municipalities, we've done a eighty-five fifteen split the whole time. We know we're not going to hit that hurdle rate until later because the municipality said, hey, we've got some projects that we want to spend some of these TIF dollars on. So we want to collect those in the TIF district. We'll take that fifteen percent. You pay yourself back with the eighty-five. And then there were some projects outside the TIF district that they wanted to do. That was a, a win-win for them.
Okay. So interest of moving along. Do you have your feedback?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks. All right. We will go on to number nine, human resources discussion and possible action on the following, nine point one vehicle usage policy. So Shay, nice.
So we just, um, I made some corrections here and the page three has the information about the citations that, um, President Booker brought up. I am working on, um, an equipment policy. I'm going to be working with Andy Cry on that, um, more within the coming weeks, um, just because I feel like it's going to be a little different than something like this. So we're just looking to see if you guys like it better now. And I have the sheet where once we go through the training, they sign off and it goes in their file and I like it. That's it. All right. And then.
Uh, so I will make a motion to approve the vehicle usage policy.
I'll second.
I got a question.
Yep.
Um, I could see this messing with the fire department.
How?
You're talking about the vehicle usage, right?
How so?
Regards though. Okay. No one other authorized, then individuals can ride in village vehicles, which would include the fire truck, right? That means no kid rides, no.
No unauthorized, meaning if the chief authorizes it, that's okay.
Is that what it is?
Mm-hmm. Yes. It needs to prove.
Unauthorized means you, uh, go out, you know, you take the village vehicle out to run an errand, but then you go to lunch and you pick your friend up along the way. Not allowed.
Right.
Yeah. All right. So we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries nine point two technology use policy.
Okay. So we already had the computer usage, but we added more to it to keep up with the, everything. Um, everything in red is what was updated. Um, we added pieces for social media and AI usage. And we, uh, and cell phone usage got beefed up as well.
Okay. Okay. I will second that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? All right. Thanks Shay.
Thanks.
Number ten, public works, ten point one payment request number three in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents for the twenty twenty-five utilities and roadway project.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Hopkins and Gant. Go ahead.
Uh, in front of you is project payment number three in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents for the twenty twenty-five street and utilities project. During July, the contractor finished restoration and punch list items along one hundred and twenty-second street. The contractor performed paving operations along two hundred and ninety-fourth avenue. This work included roadway edge excavation, remaining roadway pulverized excess material displaced into excavated edge. Roadway base course was compacted, fine graded and proof rolled. The road was paved with both binder and surface courses. Stone shoulder and driveway were placed and compacted. Within Stonehedge and Sunset Ridge subdivisions, they were both milled to a depth of approximately four to five inches. Roadway base course was compacted, fine graded and proof rolled. Excavation below subgrade was performed on areas that did not pass the proof roll, the EBS, which is your excavation below subgrade, was excavated approximately twelve to eighteen inches and filled with crush aggregate base material and compacted. The road was paved with both binder and surface. Stone shoulder and driveways were placed and compacted along the roadway. Sanitary manholes were adjusted to grade. My recommendations for approval of payment request number three in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
All right. So we have a first and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Number eleven, finance, approval of vouchers in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents for July twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
So Hopkins in favor? Any questions or comments?
Yes. On page fifty-five, we have a fee of twelve hundred dollars to a K Costello. I think that's K. For storm cleanup of July third, twenty twenty-five, a tree. Can you tell me what that's about?
Sorry, what page are you looking at?
It's on page, well, it's on page, uh,
Page two of twelve.
About halfway down. K Costello.
I believe that was for a tree that came down on our property during one of the storms.
So we paid somebody else during move it?
Yes. It was beyond our capabilities.
Yep. And then lastly, on page six of twelve, partly down. You've got two fees, one in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Another one in the amount of four thousand nine hundred dollars. The first one says extra required technical time for OPE. What is that?
Uh, I have to look into that. I'm not sure. It's like, these are credit card payments. So you're looking into more detail on that.
And how about the one right below it where it says managed support?
That's Brian.
Something with IT.
We pay that with a credit card now? Okay. Right. I'd like to know what that, uh, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollar fee was.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get you more info on that one.
Okay. That's it.
For open, oh. Extra required technical time. I'm guessing OP is open, like open records requests. That's my guess.
Who do we pay?
Brian. Um, for him to pull everything and go through it. That's my guess, but you can.
Yeah, I can confirm that.
Confirm. All right. So we have a first and a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Eleven point two expenditure report through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Number twelve administrator discussion and possible action on the following, twelve point one ordinance twenty twenty-five point eight dash one hundred and ordinance to amend section one nine six dash five of chapter one hundred and ninety-six of the municipal code of the village of Salem Lakes to expand the designation of ATV, UTV routes to include all county, we're going to strike and state. So just all county highways, highways within the village that have a posted speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour or less. And I want to say, Ryan, I'm sorry, we were supposed to call on you to talk about, um, some of those HR policies if we need to. I totally forgot about you sitting there. Okay. Yeah. Okay, good. All right, go ahead.
So based on board direction as well as a community survey, uh, the direction to staff was that we should go back and work with Remzy to modify the ordinance to allow UTVs and ATVs on county highways. We apologize that state was for some reason included. We are not proposing including any ATVs or UTVs on any state highways. So that would be highway fifty and eighty-three. That will be struck in, uh, or stricken with your permission from the ordinance as well as the ordinance, uh, title.
And if this passes, I want to make sure that we put out correspondence that that was a mistake. They are not included.
They are not included. It is not in our best interest.
The and state highways, because I could see somebody reading this and thinking, oh, that's good.
In along with the signage that we would, will be putting up, okay?
That's correct.
Not, not the village, but the, we have an ATV club that will put signs up, okay? Be very specifically if not allowing them on, on state roads. I know there's.
Correct.
Stretched down on eighty-three from a state line to like JF and there's downtown Salem is eighty-three too, or thirty-five as well. Okay. So they, those will not be allowed.
So if you approve this this evening, it will be approved with the, uh, contingency that that and state will be removed throughout this entire thing.
No, there's no motion.
And President like to make a motion that we, uh, accept the ordinance, uh, alteration as per, uh, stated with the striking of the state language.
Uh, sorry, Brooks got it for me. Ronnie. So Colleen Brooks. Okay. All in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Billie is six to one. Close session thirteen point one convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub C for purposes of considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises of responsibility. Specifically, this closed session will relate to the annual review of the village finance director treasurer.
So we'll.
Second.
Hopkins and Gant. Billy? Angela?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Ron? And I'm a yes, we are in. And I'm yes, we are in.
Wisconsin State eight five sub two for possible additional discussion and or action concerning any matter discussed in closed session. Uh we had a motion by trustee Hopkins. Nope, sorry about that. We had a motion by myself seconded by trustee Polley to go into open session at ten oh seven P M with a unanimous vote. Roll call vote um and then thirteen point one convening into uh sorry. Take that back. I will make a motion. I'm tired. I will make a motion to accept the resignation of our treasurer Christopher Demant uh effective immediately.
Second.
And I'm gonna do roll call on this um trustee Barhite.
Yes.
Trustee Brooks.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Faber.
Yes.
Trustee Gant.
Yes.
Trustee Hopkins.
Yes.
And I'm a yes motion.
Motion to adjourn so second.
So we have Hopkins and Faber. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?